Amazing how quiet a room can be. Good evening and welcome to the July 23, 2014 meeting of the Edina Planning Commission. My name is Kevin Staunton. I am the Chair of the Commission. Carrie, would you please call the roll for us?
Commissioner Schroeder.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Kilburg.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Commissioner Platterter.
Here.
Commissioner Forrest.
Here.
Chair Staunton.
Here. Thank you. Next item in the agenda is the approval of the meeting agenda. I would like to suggest one modification in this evening's agenda. I'd like to propose that Item 7D, the rezoning comprehensive plan amendment for Beacon Interfaith Housing, 3330 West 66th Street, be moved from Item 7D up in front of Item Could I get a motion to that effect?
So moved.
And is there further discussion on that, or further amendment to the meeting agenda? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And the meeting agenda as amended is approved. Next item is election of the officers. We're looking to fill a vacancy in the secretary position. Is there a nomination for someone to fill the secretary position?
nominate Claudia Carr.
There's a nomination of Commissioner Carr. And a second. Is there further discussion on that motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Congratulations, Commissioner Carr.
Thank you.[107.42][107.42](laughter)
Or condolences.[110.31][110.31](laughter) Next up is approval of the consent agenda. The only item on the consent agenda this evening is the minutes of the regular meeting of the Edina Planning Commission from June 25. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Or any modifications to the minutes of June 25?
I move to approve the minutes.
I second.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Minutes are approved and the consent agenda is approved. Next up is community comment. This is a portion of the agenda reserved for comments on items that are not on this evening's agenda. And so if you have something you'd like to bring to our attention, please come forward to one of the side microphones and tell us your name and address and you'll have three minutes to share that item. Is there anyone who would like to come forward for community comment? Well, thankful you're not all here for community comment.[178.73][178.73](laughter) All right. Seeing no volunteers for community comment, I would take a motion to close community comment.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Community comment is closed. Next up is the public hearings portion of our agenda. And on the revised agenda, the first item is the rezoning comprehensive plan amendment for Beacon Interfaith Housing, 3330 West 66th Street. Carrie.
Thank you, Chair Staunton, members of the Commission. We have a very unfortunate set of circumstances this evening. It came to our attention yesterday that we had an error in our legal notices that went out advertising the public hearing for this project. A large number of properties just east of this site, including the properties abutting this property, were not sent notice. It was a glitch in the computer program that runs the mailing list of all properties within 1,000 feet, the notification that gets sent out. An unfortunate error and we can't apologize enough for the oversight. But because of that, because there's members that weren't notified, or property owners nearby that weren't notified, staff would recommend that the planning commission table action on this request, table, or continue the public hearing to the August 13 Planning Commission meeting.
Carrie and I had a chance to talk about this in the last day or so and I want to start by saying that I've expressed my disappointment to him as well as to the city manager. It strikes me that this is the kind of stuff that we at the city ought to be able to do right, which is send out mailed notice for hearings like this. Clearly, the applicant has managed to get out notice to this hearing.[311.27][311.27](laughter) And so I want to start by just apologizing on behalf of the city for this mistake. Having said that, I think it's very difficult for us to proceed with a hearing without everyone here. And that doesn't matter which side of the spectrum you're on. I think in the interest of fairness, we want everyone here. I would recommend to the planning commission that we do continue this matter to our meeting on August 13. I will share with you that I did talk with Leigh Blons from the applicant this afternoon and she offered, or she proposed, that we open the hearing. We hear the report from Planner Teague and then we take comment, given the number of people that are here. And while I can appreciate that folks who have taken the time to come out would want to have their say this evening, I still think that we ought to make sure that when we have a public hearing, we have everybody who's interested having appropriate notice and being able to be here. But I will leave it to the wisdom of the commission as to whether you would like to do that or continue the matter to the next meeting. So comments or suggestions from the commission? Commissioner Carr.
Well, I would concur that we do table it. I don't think it's due process not to have some parties that by law are supposed to have received notice and they haven't. And not to be here, listen to the presentation and hear the comments would put them at a disadvantage. So I think it's appropriate to table it. And again, it's unfortunate, but I think that's the proper thing to do.
Commissioner Forrest.
I'm not coming down one way or the other on this. However, a couple of things. One is that anybody has the opportunity to observe this proceeding following our meeting through the video feed on the city website. Planner Teague, did the city attorney have any comments about our proceeding?
He did. Legally, we could proceed with the public hearing because the city did make a good faith effort to get out the notice. That being said, we would open ourselves up to a potential challenge because there were a number of property owners that did not receive that notice and were not included on the mailing list that was sent out.
And to be clear, we have an obligation, right Carrie, to mail to all properties within 1,000 feet? Is that right?
That's correct. So what we would do here is we would go directly to the county to get an accurate mailing list since we continue to have the glitch in our program. So we would go directly to the county to get that mailing list and then send out new notice of a hearing for August 13.
Further discussion? I'd entertain a motion if someone has one.
I would make a motion to continue this to the next meeting, the August 13 meeting.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there further discussion on the matter? Commissioner Platterter.
I was going to say, I think this is very unfortunate and I'm only making this motion as far as I think the right thing to do with not notifying people and the legality in opening up the city for potential issues with that. I would thank everyone that came here tonight. It's just definitely unfortunate.
Further discussion? Commissioner Lee.
Well, how do we address, assuming there are people here who were intending to speak or had something they wanted to say and now that they can't make it on the August 13, do we want to address how that might be recorded or some suggestions for that?
Carrie, any response to that?
Yeah, certainly. Anybody can provide written comments to staff and then we would put that in your packet for the next meeting. There are no limit to the size of a response. For a written response here, we get three minutes. So anybody in the audience who can't make it can provide a written comment to city staff and we'll make sure that that gets in front of you for the next meeting.
Or you can also have a proxy read it if someone wants to do that here. We've seen that before where come forth and read on somebody's behalf that can't come to that time.
That's sort of what I was getting at, that there should at least be an option to make it sort of the recorded part of the meeting, not simply just a printed.
That certainly strikes me as reasonable under the circumstances. Further discussion on the motion? All right. Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right. The motion passes. Before I conclude this matter though, I did talk with Ms. Blons this afternoon and she asked if a representative could have a moment to address the planning commission as well as the, I don't know if the camera can pick it up, but there are many people here this evening. And so I want to accommodate that request because I do think this is an unusual circumstance. And so I don't know who it was that you wanted to speak on your behalf, but this would be a good time.
I had two different speeches.[694.73][694.73](laughter) The acceptance and the condolences. Members of the planning commission, city staff and other residents of Edina, thank you for this opportunity to say a few brief words about our project. I am Pastor Eric Strand of Edina Community Lutheran Church. I've been a resident of Edina for 25 years. I live at 5732 Abbott Avenue South. On behalf of the hundreds represented here by many, many folks, of Edina residents, neighbors, business owners and congregations who support this project, we want to thank you for your engaged and thoughtful consideration of this project as we move forward here at 66 West. A project to create 39 apartments, units for youth in our community. The project is an opportunity for Edina to once again express its values and its commitment to each other and to the city and to the future that we share together. We, of course, would have liked to be able to speak at the public hearing tonight, but we also understand you have a process to manage. We are eager to return to meet with you and meet with the commission next month to express our support and so we look forward to that. We're going to gather now outside just with our folks who have come here and taken time out on a summer, a beautiful summer evening just to speak and talk with them about our understanding of what our future options are for this. And so we thank you for this time that you gave me to speak as well. So thank you very much.
Well, on behalf of the commission, thank you, Mr. Strand. And I want to thank everybody who came out and really encourage you. I know it was no small task to gather this number of folks tonight, but I want to encourage you to come back again in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's just take a brief minute here to recess while the chamber's clear.
Yeah, I, do you know what if you listed? Down the council living, I know they did on your agenda.
All right. I'll bring the meeting back to order and move to the next agenda item, which is a variance at 4206 Crocker in Edina. And I want to introduce Briann Rothstein, who is a consulting planner who has joined us, at least for the time being, from WSB. And Briann, I'll leave it to you to introduce yourself and this first topic. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Again, as the chair said, my name is Briann Rothstein. I work with WSB and Associates and I'm filling in for Chris for the time being. So thanks for having me. Tonight before you, you have an application at the property 4206 Crocker Avenue for a variance to the side yard setback. Steve and Peggy Porter are requesting a 4.33-foot side yard setback variance to remodel their home and to construct an attached garage approximately three feet from the southern interior property line. The subject property is 67 feet in width and 13,317 square feet in size. And the width of a property is what determines the setback in addition to the sidewall height. There are three existing single-family homes abutting the north side of the lot and one abutting the south. And I have some exhibits here. This is a bird's eye view of the property. The number one is the home that is requesting the variance. So we can kind of get some context for what types of other homes there are in the neighborhood. There are quite a few tear downs on that block in particular right now, as well as some existing homes with single car garages. As you may be aware, section 36, 438, 2 requires a minimum setback of five feet plus a third of a foot for each additional foot that that lot width exceeds 60 feet. So that results in a 7.33-foot side yard setback. The zoning for this property is R1 single-family as well as the comprehensive plan guides it for a single-family. The proposal specifically, here, I'll just go through a few more of these site plans here. This is an aerial view. As you can see, it's abutting, there are three properties abutting to the north and one on the south. And these are some pictures of the home that were in your packet as well. There's a existing one car garage on the right-hand side of the building. And what they want to do is turn that into finished living space and add another part of their home to convert this part of their existing home into a two-car garage. And this is a picture of the neighboring house. So it would be kind of similar in design and layout to that. That's what they would like to do. So when examining the request for a variance, we really look to the statutory definitions of practical difficulty in determining whether those are met or not. And so those are, in particular, are that this variance would relieve a practical difficulty that currently prevents a reasonable use of the property. And right now in examining whether there's a current reasonable use, staff does find that the current use of the property is reasonable. And furthermore, that the construction of a two-car garage, which would also be reasonable and arguably a little more reasonable, given our affinity to two-car garages, there are several possibilities for building a two-car garage on this property without a variance. And those are outlined specifically in the report. Some of them are less desirable perhaps than others, but there are several different ways that the property owner could make use of an attached or detached two-car garage without the variance. The second criteria in examining the variance is whether there are circumstances that are unique to the property that maybe other properties in the area don't have that could justify the need for a variance. And really, we do not see any particular unique aspects to this property. It's very similar in size and shape to all the properties around it. There are no environmental or wetland constraints or tree constraints that may make it a unique circumstance. And finally, in looking at whether the variance would alter the essential character of the neighborhood and in looking at the surrounding area, we don't feel that that particular criteria is not being met. I think it would be safe to say that there are a combination of attached and detached one- and two-car garages. So approving the variance would not essentially alter the character of the neighborhood. However, the statute requires that all three of those criteria be met and since that's the only one that staff believes is being met, we are recommending denial for the variance based on the findings listed in your staff report. Carrie, I would be available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Briann. Questions for Ms. Rothstein. Commissioner Carr.
You say there's three properties abutting this home or four?
There are three to the north and one on the south.
And have, I noticed there are a number of letters in support of the variance. Of those four homes, have you received letters from those four homeowners?
We have received several letters in support of the project. I know specifically the one on the south has submitted a letter. I have not verified the location of the remaining three letters.
Yeah, I'd be interested in knowing whether or not the homeowners that actually abut that property are in support of the variance because those, of course, are the people that are most affected.
So there are, let's see. Eight letters in your packet. And I know indeed one of them is immediately to the south. The remaining three lots would be addressed off of, let's see.
And maybe what you could do is, we could go on to some other topics and somebody could look that up while we're
Sure.
Listening to some other suggestions or questions. But I think it's important to know whether the people that are actually affected by that. But the property to the south, which you say is in favor of the variance?
Yes.
Is that the site that the garage is going on?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And there is one property, there is one letter from a property owner on 42nd Street. All the rest are on Crocker.
If I could add, since we've got the graphic up there, the property at 4309 42nd Street West, they've signed a letter in approval. And the property across the street at 4209 is in support as well. So right across the street.
Other questions? Commissioner Lee.
I was looking at the site plan. Do we know if the, on the, what do we call that? The north property line, where the existing garage is now, is that non-conforming as far as the setback right now? The existing garage to the property line?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
Non-conforming?
If it were to be built today, it would have to meet a greater setback.
Do you know what it is? What's the dimension?
What the existing dimension is?
Yeah.
It looks like the notation on this is six feet.
Pardon?
It looks like the notation on the staff report is six feet, or on the
Six feet.
Site plan is six feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Briann.
Thank you.
So is the applicant present? Come on up and tell us about your project. If you just introduce yourself, the side microphones are better unless there's something you want us to see on the overhead.
My name's Steve Porter. I live at 4206 Crocker.
I'm Peggy Porter, Steve's wife.
Welcome.
Thank you. I guess we'll just start speaking
Sure.
And then you can ask us any questions that you have. Obviously, we're here to apply for a variance for a two-car attached garage along with, we want to add to the rear of our property that we don't need a variance for that draws into the garage, a kitchen mudroom with a master above with a bath. So we're kind of doing the whole thing all together. Oops, I apologize. I have some notes here. We do have, from what I know, full support from all of our neighbors. If you have the map up there and you want me to tell you who they all are, they all kind of view right along the neighbors. I don't have letters from the two on 42nd Street. I've talked to everybody in the neighborhood and I believe we have full support. My neighbor Padali is here to the south here and her and Des are the ones that are really affected by our variance, which that is the preference here, that we attach our garage and pull that in versus any other.
The property owners to the south prefer that we do an attached garage because if we do a detached double garage further back on the property, it blocks, it takes up green space, it blocks a really nice open area between the two lots. And they've done some nice remodeling and put a patio and stuff out there that it would really hurt that.
Right. I do have one question about the practical difficulties and it's my understanding that that includes functional and aesthetic and that's not included, written in our definition of functional difficulties or practical difficulties. And it is listed in the second variance that's coming up in the same listing, so.
And so how does that affect your? How would you?
Well, I believe we have a functional and aesthetic issue for number one. Obviously, functionally, a two-car garage is much better. Aesthetically, we're drawing it in. We're trying to keep with the character of the neighborhood and we're really not trying to create a tear down in our house. You know, I mean, we live in Morningside, which is full of tear downs and variances and non-conforming things. And we're just trying to add on to our house to make it stay within the character of the neighborhood and also enhance our property. We really need a two-car garage.
And I think, we think by adding an attached two-car garage, it'll enhance our property value, therefore, the property values of our neighbors.
Could you talk a little bit about how you plan to deal with drainage issues as a result of the project? It's kind of where you expect the water to go, both on the front and on the back?
It's a relatively flat piece of property. We've had no drainage, I don't see any change in the drainage issues. I believe the survey, there is a plan.
Right. We had an engineer.
It's engineered.
Yeah, I'm trying to find it right now as we're speaking in my pile of paper.
Currently, there's, you might say, a small swale between the two properties.
It was created when the
What's in there?
Our house to the south is about six years, eight years old and they created a swale after. It's up a little bit higher than the house was originally next to us and that indeed, I'm guessing the water's going to go towards the street off our house, similar to like it does now.
Yeah, I'm trying to find the, thank you, that's what I was looking for. So there's a report, no, it's right in the, from our environmental engineer talking about the, and there it is, right in my packet as well. So in his, so in the, in our environmental engineer's report, he So in his, so in the, in our environmental engineer's report, he does talk about the flat grade, particularly in the back, and indicates that due to the flat grades, additional precautions are recommended to provide positive drainage to the front yard. Is that the swale that you're talking about, or do you have any?
Yeah, there's, we've got flowers along the one side and.
I don't know why it would change in the front or the back than it is right now.
Okay.
There's never been an issue of drainage.
And I just want you to know, I raise it because it's an issue of real sensitivity for us.
I know, especially on our street.
And on your street, I know, and in lots of places in Edina, and we, so when we hear these requests for variances, one of the things we really want to make sure is, when you're going and changing things, we're not changing the flow of the water and then ending up with the water in your neighbor's basement instead of in the places where we want it to go. All right, so other questions for the applicant? Yeah, Commissioner Olson.
We also, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So, you know, on your existing one, you have a deck. Are you going to add a deck on yours, this new one, too?
I don't think it would be a deck. It would possibly be a patio on the ground level.
Okay.
Commissioner Platterner?
I noticed there was a large pine tree in the front yard. What was your plan for that with this addition?
That has to be taken out, because that's where the driveway would be going down the other side of our property.
Do you plan on replacing that, or what do you?
Yes, we're going to have to re-landscape.
I mean, are you going to plant a tree in its place, or what are you going to do?
We'd love to plant a tree in the front yard, yes. We don't, won't have any. Our neighbors has a, have a very, very large, soft silver maple that's really big if you look at the front, so it would have to be towards the middle of our yard.
Commissioner Lee?
Can you tell me a little bit about how you arrived at that final plan? How many different sort of scenarios or schemes did you look at or alternatives? And how did you land on this? Were there, you could talk about some of the other options?
Some of the other options that we looked at? Well, we've been looking at this for many, many years. I have a tape measure. My neighbors would laugh at me. I have looked at all scenarios. We've looked at a side load. We've never looked at a one-and-a-half car garage that just isn't feasible. We have a one-car garage. We really need a two-car garage. We looked at side loading off the backside. Unfortunately, we have a westward view coming in, and it would take up across the whole back of our house. We would have no access to our backyard, which is part of the draw to our property right now. As you can see, we have a fairly deep, large yard.
It would block light, it'd block all the light to the back of the house.
To the back of our house, coming in, because the garage would sit in back. We can't pull it forward, because we couldn't stay within the setback lines, so we have no options up at the front side of our house to do it. So we're really very limited.
I was just wondering if maybe you had explored, the plan as I see it is a straightforward addition. You're really trying to just get your attached garage, and then enlarge it enough to make the, predominantly, the main floor, you know, give yourself some working, more living space, and make the upstairs probably a little more usable as well. I just think that there's many approaches to that, and so to me, it's important to know how you approach that. Did you do it with, did you explore things with the designer?
Oh, yes, yes, we did. We did that in 2000, and again, here in 2014, and we did, looked at several different options as to how we were going to be able to do those. I don't have the copies with me, but.
And had you ever considered a double-stacked garage and retaining it in the location that you have? So it would lengthen it a little more, but just curious if that ever came up?
A tandem garage?
Yes.
I didn't ever have, we didn't have any plans drawn up. It was talked about, but it doesn't, we're still juggling cars back and forth, and it's just not a very desirable way to have a two-car garage.
Right. Yeah, I understand that. The thing that I'm struck by on these, in this area particularly, is just how deep the lots are. And given the fact that the trend is, and the need, is to have a little more space, and I found, actually, that home, your home to be, I shouldn't say one of the few, but it still has some character to it, which actually is quite visually pleasing. There is some proportion to it as well, and if there is that need or desire to expand, the logical conclusion would be that, obviously, something has to give. And with a lot that's 200 feet deep, it just seems like there would have been a lot of exploration on how to expand in that direction, somewhat, I'm not saying a lot. 200 feet still gives you a lot of backyard, even going off the back, but it was more about a process question for me, as to how much did you explore other options and found that nothing else would work except for this, so.
Lots of plans, lots of sending it back to the designer and architect, and.
Okay, thank you.
We did consider the, you know, putting it in back, but the longer driveway, we'd sacrifice green space. We, you know.
Any other questions? Mr. and Ms. Porter, anything else that you'd like to add before I open the public hearing?
That's it.
Thank you for your consideration.
All right. Thank you, appreciate it. Don't go far. We may have some more questions for you after the public hearing. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing, and if there's anyone here who would like to comment on this application, this would be the time to come forward and come to one of the side microphones and tell us your name and address, and share your comment.
Good evening. My name is Padali Jay. I'm a direct neighbor of Peggy and Porter, Peggy and Steve Porter, and our house is directly south of their house, at 4212 Crocker Avenue. And for various reasons, we definitely support the plan of the two-car attached garage to this side of their house. As Steve explained, we've just recently created an outdoor lounging and dining space into our backyard, and we really appreciate the openness of our neighbor's backyard, and there are no fences, so we look into, looking into a green space. So from an aesthetic point of view, it would really affect our view, and we'd rather see grass than a two-car garage door in our backyard. And I've, with, where they proposed with the garage, it would really, we wouldn't really be able to see it, because it's directly just the side of the house where it would be, doesn't have a lot of windows, so we wouldn't really, it wouldn't really obstruct our view, so. So we're definitely in favor of their plan for a two-car attached garage.
Can I, before you go away, can I ask just one question? We've got an item in our packet, which is an aerial map, and I don't know if you've seen it?
No, I've not seen it.
Maybe, can you take a look? I'm just wondering if this is, if this is how it, how it looks now. You, you happy of that? Because I understand from your letter that you've recently done some changes to your house that have kind of extended into the back and created a sitting area or a porch or?
Right, and an outdoor kitchen, and yeah.
So it looks like the concrete is new in this picture, but?
This picture is outdated.
Okay.
Our sunroom is about eight feet wider, and then.
And is it deeper, or are you even further into the back?
Well, we with, well, including the landscape, we're a little bit farther back, yes, but.
Maybe we could put it on the air, on the overhead?
When I sent the application, it should have been in the pictures. Can we pull up the PowerPoint?
Is that the way it is now? I was kind of looking for an aerial of it, but.
Because I sent in like eight pictures, and there's not.
Yeah, that's what I'm. Sorry, maybe we don't have that, or do we?
I have a.
Okay, perfect.
Is this the existing neighbor, neighboring patio? Is that what you were asking for?
Right, well, I was hoping we had an aerial of it, but I guess, Ms. Jay, what you're saying is that the aerial picture we have, it actually goes deeper into the backyard than that?
A little bit deep, not that much deeper.
Okay.
Well, it does go deeper because, than what you're seeing here with the aerial photo, because we have, the outdoor patio is deeper than what it looks here.
And it looks like it faces toward the north.
It actually faces to the west.
No, the west, yeah.
Right, but, okay. All right. Well, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Jay? All right, thank you for your comment. Any other comments from members of the public on this application?
Hi, I'm Susan Grudel, and I live at 4213 Crocker Avenue, and we are in support, so we're like diagonally across, and I have both, I've lived on Kipling also, and I did additions, and then I tore down a house. But I will say what is nice about this addition is that it's aesthetically in keeping with our neighborhood, where we've had many teardowns that aren't, and it mirrors some of the teardowns of adding that attached garage to the front. So it actually ties into Crocker better than some of the homes that have been built there.
All right.
Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Grudel. Other comments? All right, seeing no further comments, I would take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Close say nay. All right, so the public hearing is closed, and we'll return the discussion to the commission Commissioner Carr?
Well, although there are neighbors in support of the proposal, and the design is very nice, I don't think it meets the requirements for a variance. I don't believe there are practical difficulties. There could have been a tandem garage put in, it could be put in the backyard, a different, a one-car, one-and-a-half car garage could be put in. I think because of the neighborhood, apparently, most of the homes meet this side yard setbacks, so actually, varying it in this instance does impact the character of the neighborhood. So my tendency would be to vote, to deny the application for the variance, and that's my reasoning on that.
Commissioner Olson?
Well, I'm really having a hard time picturing how they could even move the garage back and then further away and meet the setback and have a two-car garage, I guess. I don't know if, Carrie, did you guys, yeah, I know you mentioned that as one of their options, as you look at how that would work. I can't even picture how that would fit on the site, I guess. And with a tandem, too. I guess I'm going towards approving this, just because I kind of do see some difficulties, and, you know, pushing it back, you are going to block your view and the windows, and I just, and probably will have more impact on the neighbors than what they're proposing. But I guess I just couldn't see how, on that, on the south side, how a two-car garage could fit and meet the setback, even pushing it back, without blocking the whole back of the house, but, so, that's my opinion.
We didn't draw it specifically on a site plan, but there's, because the backyard is so large, detached or possibly even attached, an attached garage may have some functional concerns with the interior of the existing home. But you're right, it would, it would impact, in particular, the neighbor to the south, and the neighbors to the north as well, since you have three properties that face that way.
Commissioner Lee?
I find this a very difficult one to really look at objectively. I feel that, and I'm not certain, but just scanning down that street, there appear to be some homes with side yards that do, that are very, very tight, so I don't know that they all were able to meet that setback requirement. But here's the thing, this is a family who's lived in their house for that long, and they're trying to avoid a teardown. I think that is really a great thing. So in some respects, the neighbors don't object, and it's, it is to improve the house in a way that is probably in keeping with what's happened on the street. I am having a tough time with it, because I think that when, when planning department recommends, makes the recommendation, particularly to deny a variance, I think I take that very seriously. I have to take that at heart, because it's maintaining their interpretation, the interpretation of the comp plan, the zoning and everything. So it's more so when, when the recommendation would be to go ahead and approve a variance that I think that then it takes some particular vetting. So I know that I'm kind of contradicting myself, but this is going to be a difficult one, very, very difficult one for me. I do feel that a good designer, there are solutions. I do believe there are solutions, really, really nice, attractive ones. They might not necessarily slap that right next to the front facade, but there are, there are ways to do it. But again, that's, that is, that is a choice, so it's going to be difficult.
Commissioner Schroder?
Mr. Chair, I guess I, I'm actually disposed to favor the variance here, but I want to just make a couple points about that. As others have mentioned, this is a remodel without doing a teardown, which I think is admirable. They like their house, they think it fits in the neighborhood. I think it does fit in. The suggestion about doing a garage detached or attached in kind of the same general location that might actually not require a variance, if it's tandem, it will probably result in about a 40-foot-long wall along one side, which is, which is changing the essential character of the neighborhood. So the struggle here is that to do something that meets the spirit of the ordinance, or the wording of the ordinance, might actually alter the essential character of the neighborhood more than granting the variance. And that's where I come back and say, I think this is a better solution, aesthetically, and particularly from the point of maintaining neighborhood character. I think if we push them towards a solution that maintains consistency with the zoning ordinance, we're going to end up something that's more disruptive to neighbors.
Commissioner Platterner?
I'm kind of thinking on the same lines, Commissioner Schroder. It's great to have a remodel versus a teardown, and looking at the options here, I'm not, I'm not in, it's not the greatest, but I think all the other ones are not as good either. Because if you, if you put, if you bring the garage forward into the street or towards the street, that's not in character with that. We have the setbacks, the front setbacks, that's not down there. If you put it in back, then you're taking a lot more space and making it impermeable, impermeable surfaces, you're making more driveway, you have bigger issues with runoff, all those things that come up. So if this was a new one, I would definitely not be in favor of this, because I'm sure there's a way around it, but since it's an existing condition, and there's so many things that are already set in place, I would, I would tend to be in favor of this.
Commissioner Forrest?
I guess if we do, I also am leaning toward it, even though I tend to be a stickler for the details on these variance applications. I would say that if we do approve this, then we need to have findings that reflect that decision as well, because the staff report isn't, doesn't have findings necessarily in support of this. I would say as far as, again, the practical difficulties here, and what is unique to the lot, is partly the fact that this lot has so many abutting properties to it, that there are three properties to the north, and as Commissioner Schroder said, putting a long wall there is going to be, well, is going to change things as well. I also believe that there's, you know, the impact of tearing down versus the impact of a remodel and a tear-off, a significant tear-off and remodel is going to have its own negative impacts as well, even just disposing of the materials. So I think that this has perhaps a less environmental, harsh impact as well, and that the effect on the neighbors also to the south, that's another issue, that also speaks to the whole idea of neighborhood character, and part of that neighborhood character, this may not be a streetscape view, but it's also the livability of these properties and the backyards and how they interact. So I. So I guess I would, I am leaning in favor of this.
Well, I would echo many of those comments. One of the things about this neighborhood is that is really, that about the character is this backyard scape, if that's a phrase. They are very long lots and you go in the backyards of these and they go, there's all this great green space. And so I agree with the comments about changing the character if we put something further back. Moreover, I think there, you know, if you snake a driveway back there, now you've got even more hard cover that's, that's perhaps going to create greater drainage challenges. The final thing that I would note is that although it's not conforming on the, on the north lot line, that that is a side yard for this house, but a rear yard for the houses that it's adjacent to. So it's not like it's budding right up against another property that's in their backyard. So there's a little more breathing room than it might otherwise feel like. So I'm, I'm with those who are supportive. So if there's no further comments, I would entertain a motion.
Commissioner Olson. No? Commissioner Platter, Commissioner Olson. Commissioner Olson.
Okay. I move to approve the variance. Do we have to add any, I mean, so this is one of those where we don't have conditions or do we?
Findings and conditions. I could throw out a few findings if you'd like.
Okay. Please do.
Sure. We could, the practical difficulty is the existing location of the home on the lot. We're trying to work with the existing home as a remodel rather than a teardown. A two-car garage facing the street is reasonable. Detached garage in the rear yard to meet the required setback would reduce green space, impact the neighbors, and increase impervious surface. The property is unique, given the three abutting properties to the north and the length of the existing lot. And then I might add a condition that, subject to the requirements outlined in the city engineer's review memo.
I was going to add that, okay.
So moved?
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion on the motion? Commissioner Forrest.
Do we typically have a line in there regarding buildings according to the plans that have been provided?
We could sure add that as well.
Is that acceptable to the mover and the secondary?
Yes.
All right. So with that additional condition, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
So the passes, I can't count that high, six to two?
Five. Five to two.
Five to two. Seven of us. That's right, we normally have eight, not nine. Sorry. So, thank you. The, that, and that matter does not go further, so the variance will be issued. You can just follow up with staff on what to do from here. Thank you for being here this evening. All right. Next item on the agenda is a variance, Kate's Fine Homes, 6816 Cheyenne Circle in Edina. Breann, you're going to introduce this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Tonight before you, you have an application for a variance for the front yard setback at the property located at 6816 Cheyenne Circle. Thanks, Carrie. The subject property is approximately 150 feet in width and 59,561 square feet, which is about an acre and a half in size. Approximately 0.8 of these acres are above the ordinary high water mark. So there's a large portion of the property that is located into the ordinary high water line, or into the lake, as it were. The property owner is specifically requesting to demolish the existing single-family home, which currently also does not meet the setback from ordinary high water line, and build a new home. Sections 36 dash 40, 439 also requires a front yard setback equal to the average setback on the two adjacent homes. In this case, the setback, front yard required setback is 54.4 feet. Here's a bird's eye view of the existing property. As you can see, it's on Indian Head Lake. And there's an aerial view. There are two adjacent homes on the cul-de-sac, one you can see very well here on the north side, and then one as well set far to the south and east of the property on the other lot in the cul-de-sac. So the proposal is to place the home 30 feet from the front yard setback and 75 feet from the ordinary high water line. So the setback in question where that needs the variance is the average between the two adjacent homes. This is a drawing of the proposed new home, the renderings. The front is at the top there and the back is the third one down. You can see the side views there as well. And here are the homes that are currently adjacent. There's a little chart describing, A is the property on the north side of the proposed new home, C is on the south side, and then B is the one kind of next to the one on the north. Those are the four homes total in the cul-de-sac. Here are some profile drawings or elevation drawings of the home. I think the architect's renderings are probably a little bit easier to get a feel for what they're trying to do. So in examining, in examining the criteria for variance, again, statute points to a test to determine what a practical difficulty is and what we can determine as a reasonable use of the property. With regard to relieving practical difficulties that prevent a reasonable use of the property, we believe that the proposed variance is reasonable, given that the existing homes immediately to the north of a lot and to the south of a lot are set much farther back and both do not currently meet the ordinary high water mark. So because they're set far back from the front yard, they are very close, I shouldn't say very close, but less than 30 feet from the lake. They were both constructed prior to the setback requirements for Indian Head Lake. So the, the fact that they're set far, farther back is no longer even a possibility to be constructed today with the standards. The second criteria is that there must be circumstances unique to the property, not common to similarly zoned property, that are not self-created. In this case, those unique factors would be the existence of the two homes on either side that do not meet the rear yard or the ordinary high water line setback. And finally, we must find that the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. And in looking at properties on Indian Head Lake and specifically in this cul-de-sac, we find that the property and the proposal is consistent. Even though those properties are set farther back, they are on a cul-de-sac lot, so they don't have the same impact as if you were on a straight block and you had such a significant setback difference because by nature, the cul-de-sac already has two homes in the sort of front yard of this particular lot. So in conclusion, we are recommending approval based on the findings in your, in your staff report. And we would be available to answer any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thanks, Breann. Questions for Ms. Rothstein. Commissioner Olson.
Hi, I'm, I'm just trying to get an understanding of the setbacks for the existing home. So it looks like the existing home is also within, is within that 75-foot setback, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. The existing home is closer to the lake than is what being, what is being proposed with the new home.
Okay. And then, do you know what the setback current, front yard setback is of the existing?
Probably at the closest point, it's a little, probably 40 feet. I don't have that exact dimension here, but you can see on the survey, there's a light outline of the existing home. The garage is at its closest point, right there where the proposed garage, right under the proposed garage. And I would say that's, the 30-foot setback line is the dashed line. So maybe even a little bit larger.
So the, the new home is staying outside of the 75-foot setback, but is actually, it's closer also. Okay. That's all I have.
Commissioner Carr.
In looking at this design, we're asking for a variance from the front yard setback. And is the variance for the entire home or just portions of the home?
There are only, there is only a portion of the home that is located in the front yard, the existing current front yard setback. I have an exhibit of that, that I've just sketched up really quick here because I thought you might ask that.
The reason I ask this, yeah, sometimes there might be just, you know, a portion, like the garage might be into the, the setback.
There are two, two places where the home would encroach. So this is a sketch drawing, it's not perfect, but this is approximately where the existing setback requirement would be. So there's a portion of the home here, here, this, the front, the portion in front of the front stoop, and then this garage portion that would currently, that's what the variance is being requested for.
Thank you.
Commissioner Platter.
So this is a question on the engineering report. I don't know, Carrie, if you might be familiar with it too. I just, it's a comment, it looks like there, you know, a lot of work done with this report and, for example, there'll be a cistern in here to help control the rainfall rate. But just under the general comments, actually at number two, or excuse me, number three, general comments, applicant has been in contact with the watershed, but the site is still in review. Permanent stormwater facilities are atypical and may not be permitted as proposed. Do you know, is there any update on that or what Ross may be alluding to?
I'm not sure exactly where we're at with that.
Says the application has been made to the watershed.
Right, but no, no permit has been issued yet. So he's, he's questioning whether they're going to allow that kind of a, that kind of a system there.
Okay.
I know that the applicant has been in detailed discussions with the watershed district and perhaps could provide an update to you if you're interested.
Certainly interested, yeah. Okay.
Why don't we, why don't we make sure we're done with questions for Breann, and then we'll ask you to come up and we can talk through those issues. Any other, Commissioner Platter?
No, that was my question.
Any other questions?
I was going to say, it's nice, it meets the setback from the lake versus some of the other projects that've come in.
We've had some spirited, spirited discussions about setbacks from the lake and.
Yes, we have.
One question, Breann, just, sorry, just as you sit down. I'm curious about, I'm just looking at the site plan, it looks like, I'm not sure my old eyes can find it, but is it, the house to the north, is it 31.7 feet to the ordinary high water mark?
Yes, that's correct.
So if that were 75 feet, it would be considerably closer to the street.
Yes.
Is the same, do you know what the case is for the property to the south?
Property to the south is closer to the lake. It, but the, the property is very odd-shaped.
Oh, yeah.
So it, it's hard to compare apples to apples with these two that are much more pie-shaped, similarly shaped. But it does have a decreased setback from the ordinary high water mark as well.
So it's fair to say that, I mean, because this is one of those situations where we're taking the average front yard of the two neighboring properties on a circle?
Yes. Point of clarification, let me just rephrase what I just said a little bit. The existing home on the south side of, of this property does not meet the rear yard setback. The, the ordinary high water line is actually on the side of the house for the southern property. So it, it, that's not as a factor, but the rear yard setback for that property is also not being met. And so it has the similar issue, but it's not with the OHW or the ordinary high water line, it's with the rear yard property line because the property is very odd-shaped. So the lake is kind of on the side of the lot. Just wanted to clarify that.
Suffice it to say that if the properties to the, on either side were complying with the setbacks from the lake as well as the setbacks from the rear yard, the front yard setback would be considerably closer to the street?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions? All right. Thank you. If the applicants are present and want to come up and tell us about the project? So the side microphones are best unless you get something on the overhead you want to share.
This is fine.
Welcome.
Thank you. Well, my name is Michael Huber, Michael Huber Architects, 351 Highview Road, Hudson, Wisconsin. And.
I'm Jennifer Kate's Peterson with Kate's Fine Homes, 2000 Industrial Boulevard, Stewart, Minnesota.
Thank you. So happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for the applicants. Commissioner Platter.
Wondering on the status of the watershed district permit, wherever that's at. I didn't get a copy. Here, here it's coming back.
Yeah, just recently, the civil engineer, our civil engineer resubmitted to the watershed. We have had, we haven't had any indication that the two cisterns and then the, we're also adding basically a filtering at the lake. And I haven't had any indication that that was not very close to being acceptable.
Yeah, I mean, we've been in discussion with Nine Mile Creek Watershed, working back and forth for several multiple months, trying to, because our goal is to have zero runoff from the impervious hit that lake at all. So we want to contain that. So this was brought up, I believe, actually through discussions with Nine Mile Creek of containing that, filtering that water, and reusing that as irrigation for the site so we don't have any runoff from the impervious. When you say they, your civil engineer resubmitted, what, so they, what happened? Why was it a resubmital?
Well, the, the permit, the watershed permit, you know, we have a, it's, it's, to my knowledge, we have a permit, but we needed to do a couple soil samples down at the lake. Based on those soil samples, we are putting those cisterns in and filtering the water. So based on some soil samples that we took after the submittal was, that's what the Nine Mile requested of us.
They requested that after the fact?
Uh huh, uh huh.
All right, thank you.
Other questions for the applicants? Is there something, you know, the, the engineer's report, the Commissioner Platter pointed to, talks about the permanent stormwater facilities being atypical and may not be permitted as proposed. We don't have our engineer here this evening. Have you had discussions with him and do you know what he's referring to there?
Unfortunately, I don't.
Is this an unusual kind of stormwater management system that you're talking about?
To be honest, the Steve Johnston, our civil engineer, has worked extensively with many watersheds and this was, you know, to my knowledge, he was reflecting that it was a typical, this is what he does. So honestly, that comment, unfortunately, I should have talked to the, the city's civil engineer and I, I did not. To get some, to glean what he is talking about.
We're engineerless.
We are.
And, yeah.
I don't know whether that's a good or bad thing. All right. Further questions? Commissioner Lee.
Not so much questions, but just comments. First of all, I, I was very impressed with the cistern design and I wish every property took that much care to find a way to take all the water off. I mean, I was just floored. That is a huge investment on, on behalf of the homeowner and we've, we've seen so many requests for variances with, with far less material justification and study. So I was, I'm very grateful for the amount of homework you did on this and your architect. The design, I think I've mentioned this before, it, each site is different, even though it seems like it's just a box or a square, you have to approach it from the site. And I think we see too many proposals or requests for variances where it's just this idea in someone's head and they're fitting it onto the site. Now, this really, I think, was totally driven by what's happening on the site. So when it comes to cases like that, I. So when it comes to cases like that, I, I'm just much more positive about considering the variance, because literally the variance is generated by the fact that they're trying to pull off that high watermark. And, and again, it's a cul-de-sac, and I know that we set these setbacks, but those are kind of making the assumption that they're all nice straight streets, and we're going to see one house right next to the other, and so we want to honor that they're not too far off from each other, so. So I, I don't have any questions, but I think that, that it's a very nice design, and I think that I would tend to not have any issue with the variance on this.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Don't go far, we may have some more questions.
Sure.
This is a public hearing, so at this time I'll open the public hearing and ask for comments on the application. If there's anyone here who would like to comment on the application, come on forward and state your name and address and share your comments. Not seeing anyone rushing to the podium, I will conclude that there are no public comments. Ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Public hearing is closed, I'll return the conversation to the commission. Comments? Commissioner Carr.
Is it appropriate to make a motion at this point in time?
Sure.
I would move approval of the variance, subject to the, well, subject, based on the findings of the staff, and subject to the conditions outlined by the staff. And that, those conditions were the survey date stamped July ninth, two thousand fourteen, and building plans and elevation dates stamped July eighth, two thousand fourteen. And I believe we also need to add an additional condition related to the engineering plans, that there be final approval of the water drainage. And approval from the Nine Mile Watershed District.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? I mean, just in the big picture, it seems to me you're, if the, if the other properties had to comply with being back from the lake like you do, they'd be that close to the street too, and so it makes total sense. All right. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Was there a second?
There was.
Okay, I'm sorry. Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, and good luck. All right, next up on the agenda is rezoning, comprehensive plan amendment and variances for Fraunshu at fifty-one oh eight Industrial Boulevard.
Here, members of the commission, before you is a comprehensive plan amendment and preliminary rezoning. It's a site you're all familiar with, we've had a couple of sketch plan reviews on this property, fifty-one oh eight Edina Industrial Boulevard, located just west of Highway one hundred. Property is currently zoned planned office district, POD one, located in the orange here. The properties directly to the south are all zoned commercial, a PCD two zoning district. There's the Shell gas station, kitty corner from the site, that holds a PCD four zoning district, our zoning district where only gas stations are allowed. The site is currently guided in our comprehensive plan for office, it's within this pink area here. And the sites to the south are guided in our comprehensive plan for industrial. You may recall, we talked a little bit about that as part of the site plan, that we'd like to correct that inconsistency with our comprehensive plan with the current zoning being commercial and our comp plan guiding it for industrial. As a closer look at the, these sites to the south, it's the Burger King, the Little Strip Center, the gas station, and Dairy Queen. I think I have a graphic here that shows it. So you see the Burger King directly to the south of the site, retail strip center where Eddington's, there's a pizza, Cheetah Pizza, and a few other small retail spaces. This is the Shell gas station, and then the Dairy Queen. So all of these sites are guided for industrial. The site that we're looking at here is guided to office. So what the, what the proposal is, the applicant is requesting regiding of their site to neighborhood commercial, and we're suggesting as part of that, that we re-guide the area to the south neighborhood commercial, which would be consistent with the existing zoning that's out there today. So this is a look at the existing building on the site. It's a little over twelve thousand square feet, office structure. Applicant proposes to tear that down and rebuild a ten thousand square foot retail center. So this is a two-step development review process. The first step is going to require four votes of the city council, being that it's a comprehensive plan amendment, to re-guide that entire area to neighborhood commercial, a preliminary rezoning from POD one to PCD two, for just the, the one site, the fifty-one oh eight Edina Industrial Boulevard, and then a preliminary development plan. If all of that is approved by the city council, we would move to the second step, which would be the final rezoning to the PCD two, with final development plan, and then we would take action on, there's two variances that would be requested here, and that's to pull the building up to the street. Thirty-five feet is the requirement, and they're proposing thirty feet on the Edina Industrial Boulevard side and twenty-five feet on Metro Boulevard. So this is a look at the sketch plan that we looked at. You recall, it had the parking in front, there were some concerns in regard to the drive-through facility coming around the building. So the applicant has pulled the building up to the street. So this is the thirty-foot setback here and the twenty-five on Metro Boulevard, and they've reconfigured that drive-through. The drive-through would enter this way, the menu board would be down at the south end, and then proceed out, and they could go either direction. Another look at the, the site plan itself. Just to remind the commission too, there's currently two curb cuts on Edina Industrial Boulevard, they would eliminate the one closest to the, to the intersection, so we'd have an improvement on site circulation there. Traffic study was done by Wenken Associates, Ed Terhar is here from Wenk to answer any questions that may come up in regard to the traffic, but the conclusion is that the existing roadway system can support this project. A look at the building, and I believe the applicant will go into a little more detail. A brick and ledge stone facility finished on all four sides. You see they're suggesting a restaurant, basically on each end with the coffee shop on the one end. Another rendering of the building. They do have a storage, outdoor store, or a trash enclosure area, that would be brick to match the building with the fencing in front, that would be located right here in the corner of the parking lot, so with the brick fence around here. Again, some of this detail we'd look at more closely as part of the final development plan. Terms of landscaping, based on the perimeter of the site, twenty-five trees are required. They're suggesting twenty-seven over-story trees with a complement of under-story. There would be nine stacking spaces essentially from the window back around, there would be six from the menu board. Our code isn't specific on a coffee shop, this would fall into our all, all other use categories, and that's a five space stacking, so it would conform to the ordinance. In terms of the building setbacks, as I mentioned, the applicant has pulled the building up to the street, there's sidewalks, boulevard-style sidewalks along the street where none exist today, so there'd be an improvement there. So primary issues to consider, is the comprehensive plan amendment to the neighborhood commercial designation appropriate for this site and the area, and is the PCD two zoning appropriate? Staff believes it is. The proposed uses are consistent with the commercial, kind of the, the neighborhood commercial PCD two zoning that's located to the south, so that would be a continuation there on the north. And as you recall, we've considered some retail uses as part of a sketch plan for this building directly to the east. We're seeing this piece as kind of a housekeeping item, this probably should have been a guided neighborhood commercial in our comprehensive plan. Why that was guided industrial, not exactly sure. To just take a look at quickly the existing setbacks in the, in the neighborhood, the existing building has about a fifty-foot setback. The building to the east is brought up to the streets, about a twenty-five-foot setback. Across the street, they are set, the Burger King is sixty feet, the strip center has a large parking field in front, it's about a hundred and forty feet. Now, the Shell, Shell Station, about a hundred. So a lot of the uses here are set further back from the street, so this would really, with the exception of the building to the east, be the first building brought up to the street to engage the street. So we hope that that, that, that pattern would continue here. So with that, in conclusion, staff is recommending approval of the comprehensive plan amendment and the preliminary rezoning subject to the findings and conditions in your staff report. With that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you, Carrie. Questions for Planner Teague? Ben.
Where, I know that, I know there is a proof of parking for one parking stall, is that pointed out on the plan? On where that is?
It's not, that's a good question, but there would be room right here where you could add, you could probably add three or four here, and still meet the twenty-foot setback.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Planner Teague? All right, thank you, Carrie. So I'm guessing the applicants are here. Why don't you come on up and tell us about the project? Yeah, that'd be good.
Thank you. Hello, Mr. Chair, I'm Dave Anderson with Fraunshu, we're the owners of the property.
Welcome back.
Thank you, yeah. We appreciate the opportunity to be back and continue the dialogue we've had over the course of many months about the site. I think Carrie Teague did a nice job giving an overview of where we're at in the process, there's two steps. We, I think, gave you a good glimpse of how we have evolved the plan to address some of the comments that have been made over our various discussions with staff and the planning commission and council. So we're ready to proceed, we can get into as much detail here as you might like to tonight. Our architect site planner's here to answer questions on the site plan and design, and so we'll just stand for questions at this point.
All right, questions for Mr. Anderson. Commissioner Carr.
I just want to make, make sure I understand the plan, and I noticed there's some patio areas, I think three of them, outdoor seating areas, those face the street, right? That's on the street side, that's not on the parking side.
That's, that's correct, and if there's a site plan, maybe overhead, or we can pull one out here.
And then one other question, quick question. And the stone being used is ledge stone. Is that the Edina stone that's on City Hall here, or is that a different type of stone?
Good evening, hello again, Nick Sporidis, Sporidis Reiner's Architects. The ledge stone is similar to what you've been seeing on the Byerly's Development, the Starbucks Coffee along France Avenue, it's sort of a gray limestone look with a rough cut, not a very uniform and patterned look, so very natural.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, just to answer the question about the site. Thank you. About the seating areas and just looking at the site plan.
If you, if you use the mouse, you can use the cursor to kind of point around if you need to.
Great, thank you.
Should come up, there you go.
There you go. So the question about the seating areas, yes, they are along Industrial Boulevard here, there's seating areas for this tenant, which would have access to patio seating along the Boulevard, and that would flank a bit on the east side of the building, as would this tenant, they would have direct seating in area mainly on the south side of the building. This sidewalk area has also been designed to be a bit wider and a bit more usable, so there might be some opportunities for seating on this side of the building as well on the north side of the building.
Thank you.
Other questions for the applicants? All right, seeing none. Thank you, gentlemen, don't go far. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Platter.
So, a couple of questions on the site plan, if you want to bring that up. So I, I think it's great, obviously great to, that you have sidewalks on your site here. What I'm wondering is, have you spoken to the adjacent property to the east and the, the north as to what happens when it gets to the property line, and are those folks able to easily access this property? I was just even thinking, in the, the north side, is, is there, in reality, people are going to come across the parking lot there, is there a way to, to allow that to happen versus them walking through the spaces? I don't know if you have any comments to that? And, and kind of in general, do you need all the parking that you show here?
Sure. Mr. Chair, Commissioner, I'll, I'll answer the question about access, you know, the, the sidewalk access from the north is going to be along Metro Boulevard, so that sidewalk does connect where we see pedestrians mostly walking from the north.
Does it, does it keep going that way?
It, does the sidewalk connect?
I don't believe there's a continuous, a continuous sidewalk to the north. I'm looking at the area.
The area might demonstrate that. We, we will make that connection available to that property to the north, that's our intent, is to get, to get those pedestrians, obviously, into the site to access our property, but also coming across the intersection, right now, there's nothing that exists there for pedestrians to land. Once they cross Edina Industrial Boulevard, there's, there's really nothing there, so this is going to, going to be an important point for people going north or coming from the north, as well as going east to west. So the same would hold true in the future, folks coming across, same Edina Industrial Boulevard from the east will connect up, and that's another question, whether sidewalk exists on that other property, but it would be prepared for that to connect to that site.
Yeah, not only, not only a sidewalk there, but I think, you know, people are going to come straight across from those properties, so is there any, any way to make pedestrian, and I, you know, I just, it's just going to happen, you know, from, in the middle of your parking stall, somehow is there a way to put a pedestrian path through there, or even take that up to the property line on both the east and the north side? Because you're going to have people walking across those spots, probably in areas you don't want them to. Does that make, does that make sense?
Are you talking about right here?
Well, yeah, go up, just go straight north there, I mean, people are going to come across there, and then same thing on the east side to that adjacent office too.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, that's hard to know whether that's how people are going to try to get to the site. We, we think folks, obviously, will come into the site, they'll use the parking here, but those uses to the north, for example, you know, the, the parking lot and the entry to that building is positioned fairly close to Metro Boulevard, so we, we think people would tend to use sidewalk. Now, if there, you know, some of that cross-traffic we may not control directly, I'm, I'm just not sure where we would know exactly how patterns are going to work.
I understand, I, I'm just, it's, it's, what I'm getting at overall here is it's a nice spot, but it, it doesn't even seem to connect to the two next-door properties, and maybe there's not a whole lot you can do with that, but I, I just don't want to see to that point people driving from next door to park here, or driving from either side to park here. We're trying to get a more walkable area, and, you know, I'm just looking to make sure we have all the enhancements in place for, and I'm trying to help people get to your site here, you know, so, just things to look at and see if there's any way to, to, to bolster that, those pieces up.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, and we appreciate that. Your second question about the parking ratio, we're at slightly over five per thousand, I think in that range plus, and that's going to be required for the mix of tenants, we'll have restaurant, food, retail uses, so that's going to be what we'll need, and we'll meet, and we'll meet code.
Okay. And then just one kind of minor comment, and it's really a picky detail, but the transformer you show, show towards the front, you're going to screen that, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
As, as much as the utility company will allow us to screen.
Well, ask them.
We're always subject to that rule and regulation of review.
Right, or because it's right in front of your property, I'm assuming you want to see it.
I was looking for one. Well, it's, I believe, Commissioner, I believe that one that you're talking about is right here.
Correct.
Yeah, and, and at this point, I don't know that our site utilities are totally designed.
Okay.
And where the transformer location would be, so hopefully we can move it to a place where it's not.
I mean, I know you need power, but to put it out front and center may not be your best idea.
Correct.
Thanks. Thanks.
Commissioner Forrest?
I have questions about traffic. Do you have your traffic consultant here? Previously, when we've looked at this project and the one to the east, there was some concern about the fact of the confluence of those, I think there were like three entrances very near that ramp intersection with Highway 100. This one, the one to the property to the east, one or two, it looks like on this overhead and then to the south. Do you have any concerns regarding the traffic flow with that?
No, I don't. We've completed a traffic study for the access points here and also did some observations out there. And things do flow fairly well. This section of Industrial Boulevard does have a two-way left turn lane in the middle there. So, that does accommodate left turns into the sites. There are times when the left turn at the ramp does back up and people have to wait. But, it does clear. It's not a situation where there's always cars there. They do clear, and then there are opportunities for people to turn out. So, it is a busy area, but there are opportunities that do arise where people can get out from those properties, even though they are close.
And there'd be more trips generated during the day to this retail and restaurant site than the office site, I would imagine, too. Is that correct?
I didn't catch that. Excuse me.
I would think there'd be more trips generated throughout the day to this kind of a site versus the office.
Yeah, there are. They're probably spread out a little bit more on this site than they would be on the office. The office definitely has more of the AM and the PM peak. But, you know, this does generate more trips than the existing site. You're correct.
What did you identify as the peak AM hour? And how did you determine that?
The peak AM hour occurred, we did traffic counts at the, actually, there was data available already from traffic counts during the 7:00 to 9:00 AM peak period and the 4:00 to 6:00 PM peak period. And that's how we determined what the peak hour was.
Okay. There's an assumption in the report that generally coffee shops and are not, what does it say? The AM peak hour trip generation for the general retail and fast food restaurants assumes these uses are not open before 9:00 AM. I'm thinking that might not be totally realistic.
Well, no. The coffee definitely will be open. But, the other uses, if it's a Subway shop or, you know, a sandwich shop, typically, they don't serve breakfast. So, they're not open from 7:00 to 9:00, other than employees that are coming in to start up the restaurant at that time. But, the coffee definitely is. Coffee peaks in the morning, and that is the peak. It actually is fairly busy in the afternoon as well. But, coffee is one of the busier morning generators.
And as I was wondering, because it's kind of, of course, it's going to correspond with the peak commute hour, too.
Right. Yeah. And especially in this location where people are driving past to go to the offices, this is a, you know, location where they're going to pull in and grab a coffee and then go head on their way.
And your experience, the number of stacking spaces for something like this would generally be recommended?
Yeah. This is, excuse me. For the coffee you're talking about? Yeah. This is actually a very nice layout for the coffee. It has the internal stacking. And then, if that does become full, which I wouldn't expect, there is actually additional space prior to going out onto the street. There, you know, there are locations where the stacking is closer to the street, and that's a concern. But, in this location, this is very well set up for that.
I like the fact that you don't have, as long as it doesn't exceed what's, that internal stacking, at least you're not trying to line cars up where other cars are trying to back out of the parking places.
Exactly. Yes. It does work well for that.
And what about the fact that cars are going to be coming in two different entrances? Does this accommodate that easily?
Yeah, it does. It actually helps the site flow when we have two access points like that. People can come in, depending on which way they're coming from and going to, and they're not all forced to one point.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Carr?
I just wanted to say, although we're not approving the final development plan, I wanted to compliment the team. I think it's very well designed. It met some of the desired objectives of the planning commission, moving that forward. The rain garden is a nice feature. You have the public spaces. So, I wanted to compliment you on that. My second point is, I'm not sure I still understand the difference, well, exactly what ledge stone is as a stone, whether that's the same stone that's used on the City of Edina building here and whether that's the stone that's thought of for use in Edina. But, maybe, I would just recommend that when you come back for the final development plan, maybe come with some more information about ledge stone so that I could understand that and why, what are the pros and cons of using that material?
Certainly. First of all, Commissioner, thank you for your comments. We, the design sketch review process with council and commission has been valuable to the site design. In talking with Planner Teague, materials board will be presented along with our final site plan approval. So, we don't have it tonight. We'll have samples for you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Platter?
Is there still a bus stop on the west side of the site? It shows on Google Earth, and it's, I don't know.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, there was an aerial that some of us might take us back deeper into the original presentation, capture some of that.
See the little blue symbol there?
It appears, though, but I don't notice anything significant other than maybe, you know, a concrete place. But, they're, not that we're aware of anything significant. There is at the shelter.
Okay. Thanks.
Other questions? Commissioner Lee?
What is the cornice made out of? What is that material?
At this time, we're considering a stucco material or an ephes.
Ephes?
Talking with Planner Teague about the percentage of materials, something up that high. We needed a little lighter material to deal with. So, the percentage, we haven't designed it fully in terms of its actual dimensions, but that's our goal, is to use something like ephes.
Okay. And then, I was looking at the site demo plan. So, right now, there's some significantly large spruces in their Boulevard trees. Those all have to go in this new design? So, there will be nothing between the sidewalk and the curb except for grass? Is that the, sort of, the intent? All new trees or existing trees will all be on your side of the sidewalk? So, we're not, we're going to lose kind of that green buffer zone that's there now? Is that right?
The plantings, in order to pull the building to create that more pedestrian orientation to the street, we do have three overstorey trees between the sidewalk and Edina Industrial Boulevard sidewalk and the building. That's our plan. So, we'll be planting there. We'll also have overstorey on the side, the Metro Boulevard side.
But, they, but nothing on the other side of the sidewalk? They're all between the sidewalk and the building?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And was that a factor of the request to pull the building? If the building hadn't, how much would you need to keep some of those trees in that Boulevard?
It's definitely a factor when we were talking about pulling the building towards the street. You'll also notice on this plan, there's a dash line. I'll run the cursor along here. There is a right-of-way easement that exists all the way to the sidewalk that we can't put any sort of encumbrances within. I don't know if that is for a future turn lane or for, it's an easement that is there. So, we can't do much about between the sidewalk and the street.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Olson?
Just a quick question about the parking. So, why not the required amount? There's one that you're doing a proof of parking for. Is that correct? You just couldn't fit it in? And I know that we were kind of showing where you might show that proof of parking, but has that been looked at? If that would actually function with the cars entering the site? All right. I guess.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, I think what, as this evolved and we placed the garbage dimensions of that container, it ended up taking a couple of spaces. So, we ended up one short in our design. But, I think that location on that East Bay south end would be where one or two, perhaps, spaces would go. And as I think Planner Teague mentioned, that that would still be within our setback requirement at that point. So, that's likely where that would go. It would be a refinement to the site plan coming back if there was a need for it. And we'd intend to look at that so we could maximize parking.
So, as part of your traffic study, did you look at the parking demand and, no? Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Schroder?
Mr. Chair, I just have one comment, and it relates to the pedestrian access to the building. And I understand there's limited places on the site where you can actually move from the public sidewalks or the sidewalks along the streets and in the building. But, the one place where you come off of Metro Boulevard, you actually have drainage from the parking lot going across the sidewalk that leads to the building and into a small infiltration basin. It just seems like we should have a sidewalk, you can get to the building without having to walk through a stream of water when it's raining.
I believe we connect the sidewalk right here. Have you seen the cursor on the plan?
Correct. And immediately to the north, you have a curb cut draining the parking lot, straight into that infiltration.
Right here?
Right there.
Okay. So, we have a sidewalk coming across here and a sidewalk that leads us to our patio and entrances?
Yep.
And you're suggesting a sidewalk?
No. I'm suggesting a way to get the water to not flow across the only sidewalk leading to the building.
I'll have to pull up our engineering drawings. I'm sure they've considered somehow either a catch basin that pipes underneath that sidewalk or it won't run across the sidewalk.
So, just so we're all clear, can you outline that on the map? I can't. I'm not sure I understand that.
Let's see if I, there's a dash line right here that is denoting a lower area. And the drainage comes into this area through here.
Oh.
And our sidewalk cuts across. So, I just have to look at, we'll take care of that.
All right. Other questions? Yeah. I'm going to do that next. Okay. All right. So, this is a public hearing. So, at this time, I'll open the public hearing and ask if any members of the public would like to comment on this application. If you would, come to the podium, one of the side podiums, and state your name and address and share your thoughts. Not seeing any takers. I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Someone, someone?
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? While in favor, say aye.
Aye.
While opposed, say nay. Public hearing is closed. We'll return the discussion to the commission. Commissioner Kilburg?
I just have some general comments on the design, the plan, and kind of the approvals that we're working on. I would like to just start encomending the design. I think it's, it takes into account, I was here the other meeting that we reviewed it, and I think it takes into account a lot of the, kind of, the suggestions we were giving you. I like that it accommodates kind of pedestrian movement better than the other one where you had a gap in between your two buildings. And I just felt like there was a lot going on there. I feel like this is a simplified design. I think that the setback towards the street sets a good precedent, an example for future sites around this area, especially with the re-comprehensive plan amendment. If we did do this entire area, it would push maybe, especially, you know, with the building to the east redeveloping, or, yes, the east redeveloping, it, I think that it sets a precedent for something that does induce more pedestrian movement. So, I commend that. I think that it's also commendable, the new drive-through design. The old one was very, there was a lot of apprehension coordinated with this. I think that this one makes more sense. Nine stacking spaces. It seems to me like a lot of stacking spaces, I don't know what a standard is. And I do also enjoy the, kind of, you label it as a rain garden. I think that it's a nice kind of breakup of the impervious surface on your site. So, it's not one big parking lot again. You have, you do have those, you do have those, that kind of breakup of your parking. I also like the aspect of a pull-to street. We did talk about with the review to the east, this kind of being as one of the gateway points to Edina. Coming off of Highway 100, you come into Edina. And I commend that this is a gateway, that you see a building, you see nice landscaping and design rather than a parking field. So, I think that's appropriate here. I also think I generally am in favor of less parking. I would agree that the proof of parking is appropriate. However, the only time that I wouldn't be in favor of less parking and the idea that we generally overpark Edina is with retail and food situations. I think that's the only time that we do see that we don't always overpark. Sometimes, we do run into problems. So, I would like to see kind of in a final plan, some more studies on how during peak hours of your, the specific uses in your building, will we be running into problems with the flow of traffic with the parking that's needed here? So, those are just, oh, I have one more comment. It's not necessarily on yours. It's on the comprehensive plan amendment. I think that the entire comprehensive plan amendment of this area makes sense to myself. And I think that I'd be, or I'm in favor of approving this to be part of that kind of southern block of commercial retail.
Well put. Other comments?
I have a question, Carrie. In terms of the comp plan amendment, I agree with Commissioner Kilberg's comments about including the properties to the south. Is there a reason that we ought to include the property to the east? Or is that better left until they come in front of us?
Yeah. That was my thinking. It gives the city a little more, a little more authoritative power to require certain conditions.
And I suppose we don't know exactly yet what, I mean, they've been through for a sketch plan, but we haven't seen the specific proposals they have. And currently, it's office.
Correct.
Okay. So, maybe it's not appropriate to approach that now. Other comments? Commissioner Lee?
So, I know that I was not on this commission when it was reviewed the first time. So, I'm just curious, because this has come up a couple of times, this comment about pulling buildings to the street. Obviously, we have setbacks in the zoning that, that is the required setback. But, in most cases now, that's come up a couple of times where we've either requested that or said that was desirable. My question is, was it really so much about closer or distance from the street? Or was it about engaging the street? And the reason I ask is because there's many different ways to engage the street. And in fact, when we were considering that one property over there on York, it just didn't seem appropriate at all to be saying that we want to pull it close to the street when none of the buildings were actually close to the street. In this particular case, I think that everyone identified this as a kind of a busy corner. And I'm just kind of comparing, although I think that this was a great solution, site solution, when I compare it to what was proposed before. But, the scheme before did give a little more on that corner. And we have really pushed the sidewalk to that 90-degree point there. And I just know that had people walking on there, you probably don't feel that comfortable standing there too long. A lot of, you know, a lot of right hands, a lot of left turns. So, I just, I think that maybe we just need to be sure that when we say engage the street or close to the street, that we're clear about what that is. And maybe what it is, is it's different for every case. So, that we be clear about what those requirements are. I don't know if you guys can fill me in on that and on that background of that requirement?
Good comments. Anyone care to offer thoughts and response to Commissioner Lee's comment?
I think the goal is to engage the street, not necessarily just to pull the building forward for the sake of pulling the building forward.
Right. And so, you see here, we lost those Boulevard trees. And there's something pleasing, I find, about trees between the curb and the sidewalk. If you have the luxury of creating enough distance there before you hit that sidewalk, putting the trees there. We tend to see a lot of the developments where the trees and the landscaping all hug the building. So, then you're really out in the open there on that sidewalk. It's just the sidewalk, a strip of grass. So, yeah, that's, that was sort of my first impression of this. And I was mulling that over. You know, I understand there's an easement, but there are some existing trees now. They probably are a little too far back to make it work in any case. But they're significantly large trees, they were spruces, so they're beautiful trees. And that corner, we are trading out for something different, and I guess just have to weigh it, sort of, by the requirements and what we get and what we lose from it, so.
Commissioner Schroeder.
Well, I would like to weigh in on the, kind of, the idea of pulling the building forward to the street, because we've done it in a few cases, but I think what we have pushed for is the relaxation of the setback that's allowed in the PCD III ordinance, I believe, which allows for that relaxation if we create an engaging, as you said initially, an engaging street front. And while this provides patio space, it seems to have some windows, but we don't know the character of those windows. The patio spaces don't actually connect, there's landscape spaces surrounding those patios, so you can't actually move from Edina Industrial Boulevard to the building. Where we've done this over on York, we've really pushed hard to make certain that those facades that are brought close to the street are active, not just closer to the street, but actually engaging with transparent windows, with operable doors, things that allow people to move between the sidewalk and the building. And I guess that's one of the things that, in a building like this, you have a backside, and in this case, the backside is trying to be nicer, but it's still a backside of the building it's addressing, and is very close to the street. I think when we pull buildings up to the street, we should be looking at it not from just the notion of having it closer to the street, but having that engagement, the kind of necessary interaction that happens between the public realm and the face of the building.
I was looking at the rendering of, so on the south side, the site plan actually shows three trees, but the rendering only shows two, because there actually would be a third tree on that face, the south elevation. Oops. I should say, the view from the south, it's the perspective.
Oh, okay. I would follow the landscape plan, which at this point would be the three trees. That's how it's designed. The rendering is probably more demonstrative of the exterior design, just so we don't block it.
So, the doors that are shown on the south elevation, are those entrances, or are those, I mean, going to the discussion we were just having, what's the nature of those access points?
The doors that are shown will be active doors. They will not be just blanked off and inaccessible. The tenants haven't been, haven't chimed in yet on how they will use their space to allow for access, pedestrian access. Certainly the patios can be designed to access the sidewalk, so that you can actually enter as a pedestrian from the sidewalk into the, either of the two corner tenants. So, the intent is to create an active environment along that facade. It's not to just put some glass and then cover it so that it's obscure. But the intent was to pull it forward and make it active, actually.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Schroeder.
Can we ask the applicant to talk about the activity of those patios, how they're going to be used? Because they're really kind of small.
I think you just did.
Okay.
Both would be food service, obviously coffee shop on one end, a sandwich on the other side, primarily used for dining and seating of the patrons. I mean, that is essentially what those patios are for.
So they're also on the two most car-active corners of your building. You have a drive-through coming through on one side, and you've got the busy intersection at Edina Industrial Boulevard and Metro Boulevard happening on the other.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, we've been through a lot of discussion with the users of the space, and they've actually been quite attracted to that feature in that location, so they're quite comfortable. And that's really what we're trying to do, is engage businesses who want to thrive at this location, so they do happen to like that. The other part of the exterior is we've widened that north sidewalk into the entrances to those tenant spaces, so that's also going to be area where there could be some seating or just area for more pedestrian activity in and out of those business storefronts. So, all sides of the building are going to be very engaged.
I guess I'd like to echo what my fellow commissioners have said about the corners, the patios, the traffic and all of that. Especially, as Commissioner Schroeder pointed out, the landscaping that surrounds those patio areas and separates them from the foot traffic that might be on the sidewalk, and it looks like it's completely separated. I personally would really like it, before you come back, if you would maybe explore some other alternatives with that lineup, perhaps, I don't know what's going to be aesthetically best for that, with the building, but even softening the lines, showing that, you know, paths into the building from the corner, providing more space to hang out, as Commissioner Lee was saying, that if you're on the corner, you don't feel like you're isolated from the patio by those bushes on one side and the traffic on the other, but that you have to run in the building, and then when you come in the front, if you go into either of those center doors on the south side, you're coming right into the utility and toilet areas. So it's not overly welcoming in that way, at least if I've read this correctly. So, there's seating there, but it's, it's kind of like more of an employee break than anything else, I think, rather than engaging the public.
Carrie, with respect to the easement that was referred to on the sight line, or on the site plan, do we know, is that our easement is in, is the street a county road? Is it a city road? What's the...
You know, I'm not entirely sure, just given the shape of the easement, it does look like it was a right-turn lane.
Right.
Kind of thinking, but that's not to say we couldn't do some plantings in there. You know, they might be under certain conditions, and if that right-turn lane were to ever be put in, they would, that would go away.
But even then, you know, how the building gets positioned, if it's tight and then a right-turn lane shows up, it's going to really be tight, too. I mean, it makes me wonder whether we need the right-turn lane, whether that's part of what you do, or do you design it to avoid that, assuming that the right-turn lane will happen someday? It's hard to know from a traffic perspective.
Aren't we starting to get away from that in the vision of making it more pedestrian-friendly, right? We want to, instead of cutting off that corner, increase that land area.
And so if we kind of let go of that, then does that help address the issues that we've been talking about?
I'd like to see some plantings in that Boulevard area. I think it's going to be a change from what's there now. I know that it's underutilized in a sense now, but the primary feature of that corner right now is, there's a green, big green triangle there. And I believe there, previous discussions, I was reading the notes, Commissioner Platter said, let's, why don't you go all out and make it a real pedestrian, you know, address that, and come up with something. I feel if anything, it kind of got shrunk in this go-around, but, but again, it's a response to pull that up closer to the corner.
If I could add a little to the pulling it up to the street, I think part of the reasoning, and I think it's referred to in the comprehensive plan, is pulling the building up to the street, in addition to everything that you've talked about, is to avoid having that parking lot in front of the building. So, in potentially moving the building back, we would need to be careful to make sure it doesn't impact the two rows of parking back there. Just looking at the building, it looks like there is some room to work with there, and still maintain those two rows of parking.
Mr. Anderson, maybe you want to speak to just the, you know, I think what we're kind of looking at as we look at the site plan, to Planner Teague's point, you know, if we're going to put the parking behind the building, and, you know, you've obviously done that in response to our kind of urging, now you've got a little bit of an envelope that that building is in, and you've got some space in the back for kind of patio, and you've got some space in the front. You want to talk a little bit about, you're thinking about how you allocated the space on either side, and why you, I mean, it almost looks like you chose a little more on the back, but maybe that's just an illusion from the optics of it.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, if we could bring the site plan up, the colored site plan, one more time? And I will try, right there. And I will try to address that again. As this evolved, we've gotten comfortable with this idea of bringing the building up to the intersection, and we have room for sidewalk, you can engage the building, the architecture, and the scale fits with that street. There's patio seating that would be comfortable for those tenants or users or customers, so we're evolving that direction. What we did, we need double-loaded parking, you know, so we need a dimension here to allow, you know, parking and drive-aisles and everything to function, so that sort of sets a template. The building has to be a certain depth for retail users.
Right, so what I'm getting to is, I give you, I grant you the double-load, but then when you get from that line to then the sidewalk, you know, what was your thinking in terms of where the building floats between those two?
That was a judgment that there might be, having some additional, a wider walkway and sidewalk for patrons walking into those spaces might be desirable. So, we could look at that, and I think we're talking a matter of feet, perhaps, if that building moved north a bit, you know, two feet, three feet, there's room there. What's the dimension on that sidewalk?
That area is 10 feet, so we have...
Yeah, I understand we're just talking about feet, but it is kind of, you know, you're going to have cars on either side, whether you're in the parking lot or you're out in the street, and to the comments that have kind of been made earlier, maybe if you slide it into that 10 feet a little more, you create a little more on the front. I'm not sure I know the right answer to that, but that's, if, assuming the parking is not going to be in front of it, I get that you have limits on what you can do there, but that seems to be the way to go.
Yeah.
Commissioner Schroeder.
Well, I just offer this, and I agree with the idea, the notion of trying to slide the building slightly north, because what we have right now are patio spaces across the north side, which don't really function well for people to occupy. They're small, and they're on the north side. And then we have the same, we have small spaces that are hard to understand how people can use them on the south side. And it would seem like if we're trying to create a way to engage the street by pulling the building forward, we ought to be creating really good, occupiable spaces in the places where people can see it as they drive by, and places that are, spaces that are large enough for people to reasonably occupy. And the 10-foot zone that's on the north side, it seemed like a portion of that, and I'd actually offer a significant portion of that, might be better served on the south side of the building, where people can actually, so create one really good set of spaces instead of trying to spread it all around the building.
Yeah, it's an interesting, go ahead and react to that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, and we like that discussion we're having here. I think we can look at that and find that balance.
It is, you know, it's almost like by trying to have it both ways, both turn out to be a little lacking, and maybe you got to choose one or the other, and, you know, if the street engagement is what we're striving for, maybe you choose that one, and then your, you know, your chairs and patio kind of stuff is in the front, you know, on the street side instead of on the, and maybe the, you know, if people are coming in and out of those places with their car, if they're kind of grabbing something to go, they're doing that in the back, but if they want to sit and linger outside, they're, they'll go through the building and go out to the front. Just a thought. Other comments? Commissioner Carr.
There's a lot of impervious surfaces here, of course, because we have a parking lot, but was there any plan to put permeable pavers in the two patios and the, looks like a concrete sidewalk?
We have not determined the surface at this time. It's with the rezoning and the variance request, the next phase will determine, but it is a great idea to have pavers of some kind rather than hard surface.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this going forth, subject to the staff conditions, for the preliminary rezoning and site plan approval. I don't think I noticed any other conditions on here, or did, I mean, staff conditions, I mean...
Carrie, do you want to do it all as one, or do you want separate motions on the comp plan and then the zoning? So we've got, we've got...
Yeah, I do have it set up as two separate motions.
Two. So which is the first one then?
Comprehensive plan.
Oh, so, motion to approve the comprehensive plan amendments as set forth and subject to the staff approval comments, which there are five of them.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
And the second motion to preliminary zoning to PCD II, and the preliminary development plan, again, subject to the staff conditions on here, which there are at least five, two...
Conditions and findings.
Conditions and findings.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Commissioner Schroeder.
In the condition number one, it says the final development plan will be generally consistent with the preliminary development plans. Does that allow for some reapportionment of public space around the building in the generally consistent, in the term generally consistent?
Or maybe you want to even include an additional condition that addresses this issue we've been discussing.
Then maybe I will offer an additional condition to the proposal, that we ask the applicant to consider reapportionment of the public space, the patio space on the north side of the building, to create more significant and usable spaces on the south side of the building.
Is that acceptable to the mover in the secondary?
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Lee.
Would there be any support for looking at adding trees in the Boulevard area?
As a condition, I think it's been stated that that's going to be looked at by staff, right, Carrie?
That would be, but you could certainly add that condition, beef up the landscaping, consider or require trees along the Boulevard.
Okay, I would like to add that then as a condition. My understanding is, where the sidewalk placement is shown here, that's not going to change. It's really the placement of the building. We're suggesting that it, okay. So, it is what it is, and what I'm saying is that I believe that Boulevard should be looked at as a place to do some landscaping with trees.
And can I, can I propose in addition to the addition, which is that staff explore the possibility of vacating that right-turn lane to help facilitate that?
Mr. Chair? It's actually an easement right now, and in the engineer's report, they talk about establishing the easement so that the sidewalk is actually on public property instead of on the, so I think there's some kind of sequence that needs to happen, and whether it's through replating, the sidewalk and then the Boulevard area actually becomes public right of way instead of part of the property as it is today. So it's not really, it's not really vacating the easement, it's replating the property.
So you think that Commissioner Lee's kind of suggestion about examining the landscaping and gets to this issue?
I think the question that you were raising is slightly different. It's about the need for a right-turn lane.
Right.
And I don't know that we have enough information to be able to determine whether it should be eliminated, but I think I agree with the city engineer's recommendation that either we get an easement that puts the sidewalk in the public realm, or that the property is replatted. One of the things it does is it changes kind of the essential nature of the setback, because right now it's 30 feet and 30 feet from the curb line, because that's where the property line is. In essence, we will be approving something with a replat that'll have the building with a setback that's probably closer to 10 or 12 feet, which could establish a different precedent for pulling buildings up to the street in this area, but it's a matter of imaginary lines that nobody ever sees.
All right. So it's probably not necessary to add that in? All right.
So if I could ask, is, what is, what if anything is to be added from that discussion?
So I think the condition that Commissioner Lee was proposing, which was, if you want to quickly sum, I'm sorry, I muddied up your condition.
With the condition that trees be considered, plantings of trees be considered in the Boulevard area, as well as adjacent to the building.
Okay, is that acceptable to the mover in the secondary?
It is, but I'd like to add to that, that it's subject to findings, because we can't make them do it if they're not allowed to do it.
Right.
Oh, yep, that would be fine, subject to findings.
All right, and Mr. Anderson, you look like you want to weigh in. All right, and Mr. Anderson, you look like you wanna weigh in.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, yes, on the point on boulevard trees, because this is retail, and we wanna be sensitive and have the right types of planting and heights, but we have signage, and we have tenants with signage, so it's something we wanna understand what, what we're driving at. Is it landscape aesthetic? Um, because we have to be sensitive to height and visibility and to the signage.
I think that you could, you could select trees that would, that would work. Also, I believe that we're not talking about a lot of trees. You're, you're only showing three here next to your building, so two, three trees, so of appropriate height. Um, majority of time, if they were deciduous trees, wouldn't even be an issue for the majority of the year. So, um, it proposed something, I think that you, you certainly probably know better.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair and Commissioner, we appreciate that, and we just wanna be on record here that that's going to be a consideration of ours coming back to you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Fair enough. All right, are we, um, we out of conditions?
I believe so.
All right, so is there further discussion on the motion as amended?
No one did just say-
There was a second, and, and many, Commissioner Carr seconded and-
And I'm also in favor of the condition.
Yeah, she didn't do that yet.
Very good, now we got that sewed up. Uh, other discussion? Commissioner Forrest.
Just a quick comment regarding the, um, the landscaping and stuff. Keep in mind that what we're asking is that people can sit out there, that they can enjoy their, their time there, that they can walk through there and feel welcome. So as you're looking at overstoryed trees and all of that, consider shade, it's the south side of the building. It's, otherwise, it's just a facade, again, that's supposed to look welcoming, that doesn't work, so we want it to work.
Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, congratulations. Uh, so that goes then, this is, these are both recommendations to the city council, so it will go to the city council at, do you know what meeting?
On August 4th.
On their August 4th meeting. All right, thank you very much. All right, next up on the agenda is the reports and recommendations section of the agenda. The first item is zoning ordinance amendment, front yard setback, and first floor, one foot rule for tear down and rebuild. Carrie, you wanna introduce this?
Certainly, thank you Chair, members of the commission. This is what we had a little bit of discussion on at our last meeting, um, in regard to interpretation of our front setback, uh, front street setback requirements, and the one foot rule for tear down rebuild specifically when they relate to a split level, um, being torn down. So, the current language in the front, you recall a few years back, we made some changes as a result of that lawsuit, um, in regard to the front street setback requirements. And it, I think it's safe to say it hasn't, this ordinance has not been, um, really smooth in our interpretations, and there's a lot of circumstances out there where it doesn't work very well. Um, and part of it was, before, we had three choices on how you could establish your front setback. One of the choices was an average on the block, which oftentimes people used because the other two alternatives of averaging the two on either side didn't work very well. Um, and so that average on the street was essentially eliminated unless it was the only alternative. It's still in there, but, um, it's, it's only if one and two don't qualify. So, the, the current ordinance, um, reads, "If there is an existing dwelling unit on an abutting lot on only one side of the lot, the front street setback shall be the same as the front street setback dwelling on the abutting lot." It doesn't have any language in there in regard to whether the abutting lot is on the same street, so we're suggesting, uh, language to that effect. Um, and also, if it's on the same lot, if in a abutting lot is a corner lot with a side street setback, um, we're suggesting that the lot with that side street setback not be considered in a abutting lot.
So you're trying to get, add, um, so have we had, like, if you have, let's say you just have your traditional two, a rectangular block with street, house fronting on the street, backyard has a house fronting on the street behind it. Are you saying that we've ended up having to count the house abutting it on the rear that, as part of the front yard setback?
Yes.
All right. And so we don't wanna do that, and you're trying to address that. And then the same issue when you get to the corner, it's not the side street, it's the front street that we wanna measure the side yard, or the front yard setback by?
Correct.
Because the idea is to try and have some uniformity as you look up and down the block, assuming you're talking about a nice straight rectangular block, unlike the ones that we see all the time that are circular or curved or like, but this is just trying to deal with that, although I suppose it applies to the circular ones as well.
It does. Yeah, so, so that's the intent, and, um, there's a couple of examples in your packet, kind of that circular street. Um, in interpretation of the code, say, the, the corner lot, um, where there's a couple of arrows pointing, the 50, oh, I need my glasses, 5513, I believe, is the, is that corner lot. Um, as an example, let's say that home were torn down, you could interpret the code to read, the average of the two abutting lots would be one lot, or it would be taking two lots from homes on different streets.
Maybe 5508, 5509.
And that's not the intent either. Um, so that's where the language that we're suggesting, um, that they both have a front setback, or a street setback on the same street, and that if in a abutting lot is a corner lot with a side street setback, that we not consider that.
And the reason we do the average in the first place is that we just have too many variations to have a straight 25-foot setback.
Yeah, we, you recall, we had that discussion, yeah.
We've got in our one district that is the whole city, basically.
Correct.
And you've got everything from the Indian Hills project we had tonight to a 40-foot set of lots in Pamela Park or Morningside.
Right, you recall the rolling green, we've had variances to have a front yard setback of 70 feet, and that was too close to the street, so-
Right, okay.
Um, it's difficult without rezoning everybody and establishing, um, new zoning districts, which, we've talked about that in the past too, but-
Decided not to go there.
Right. And then the second piece of that is the, the tear down rebuild, um, or building a significant addition. And the problem that we're running into is in particular to a split entry when that's torn down. The way the ordinance is written now, um, well, I'll just read it. "If a split level dwelling is torn down and a new home is built, the new first floor or entry level elevation may not be more than one foot above the front entry elevation of the home that was torn down." And we don't define front entry elevation. We weren't thinking that a garage was a front, front entry elevation, but you could interpret this as the garage is the front entry. Um, so we've crafted some language here that I think's a little more clear than the language that I brought to you last, the last time, which was, uh, pretty convoluted, but, um, so the suggested language would be, "If a split level dwelling is torn down and a new home built, the first floor elevation of the new home being torn down is deemed to be the lowest elevation of an entrance to the dwelling excluding an entrance to the garage, excluding entrance to the garage and entrances that don't face a street." It's, I, I, there may be some circumstances out there that we're not thinking of, that this could be problematic, but-
Surely there are. Commissioner Lee.
Uh, Erleene brought that up last time, and I've been in a house just like that. So what about the door that's next to the garage, but it doesn't go into the garage, you'd actually walk in and go straight up, or into the house? There are those, those types, so-
Go out of that.
I guess you, you would probably say excluding entrance, uh, excluding entrance to the garage, excluding entrances maybe at the garage level, and just leave it at that. So then you don't have to get into, is that door going to the garage? No, it's actually still leading to the house.
Except then, except then if you're just on a flat, if your garage is at the same level as your front door, you only, you know-
That's all right, 'cause then you're still looking at entrance to the dwelling. But I could see if there's-
That may be acceptable in that, you know, the goal of this is not to set that first floor elevation of the new home way above, so in that instance, um, it might be a good thing. Your first floor elevation is quite low still, and if, if they can't make it work, there's always the variance process.
Um, I'm getting my brain twisted around this thing now. Um, I'm thinking of a situation where if, if you're excluding the one at the garage level, then they have the excuse to perhaps go to a secondary entrance that's higher, and then actually raise the front, the first floor elevation that way. I kind of like it the way it's written, knowing that we may have to go for a variance in some situations where there are double, where there isn't a second entrance on that garage level, but, because I can't get my head around another way to do it either. The other way, the other thing I was, um, wondering, and is, how do you determine what is the front yard on a, on a home? Because there are some tear down rebuilds, I know of one, one in particular, that the address originally was on one street, and then to fit the house on it the way you wanted to the builder, now the, the garage and the main entrance both face the side street. I don't know if their address changed or, or not, but what is determined as the front yard at that point?
On a, in a corner lot you're talking?
Yes.
Yeah, on a corner lot, the ordinance allows the property owner to choose what's their front yard.
Okay.
Now, if the home's on either side, let's say on both sides, the home faces the street, they would have to match that home that faces the street on both sides.
But would that allow them, oh, I'm sorry-
Go ahead.
Or would that allow them then to shift it forward on what was the original street address, because they're not considered part of that street anymore? Um, in other words-
No, the, the address wouldn't have any, wouldn't impact what the setback requirement would be.
No, I'm just saying that, but if they can choose which is, which way it goes, um, there's an existing home on the original, what was originally the front yard. They flipped the house now, so it's facing the other way. Does that allow them now their front yard becomes a side yard, and they aren't subject to that front yard setback?
Well, it would still be dictated by the home on either side.
Even though it's a side yard, not a front yard any longer?
It would impact, well, still, if there's an existing home on the abutting lots-
This is designed to do away with that. So if you're on a corner lot, you're only gonna be subject to the one on the same street as you, right? As, to determine your front yard setback? Well, so there's flipping your front, so you can choose which one you want to be your front yard, but you have to face the house that direction, right? Or can you call what is clearly the side of your house your front lot, your front yard for purposes of this?
Well, assuming there's a home still adjacent, that's gonna dictate your setback, whether you face the street on either side.
Well, but it's, so if you're on a corner lot, and you have a house behind you, and they have a house next to you, only one of those houses is gonna be used to dictate your front yard setback. Right? And, and, so to me, you shouldn't get to monkey around with it by calling one of them your front yard when clearly you're facing your house the other direction, 'cause we want them to line up as they orient, to the street they orient to. You don't wanna side yard flush with somebody's front yard, you wanna front yard flush with the front yard. See what I'm saying?
I do, um, but if you, if you have an abutting, if one of those houses on one side is a side street setback, they could bring it closer to the street. But if both, we should have pictures that I should be pointing to.
So look at your, um, I don't know if you can put this up, the, the aerial views you have?
6605.
Exactly, I was gonna say, look at 6605 on the second page.
And I think what Erleene was saying, wouldn't the side yard setback govern what, you know, whichever one now has become a side yard setback, you couldn't just arbitrarily ignore it and exceed your side yard setback?
All right, if you can zoom in on that there.
Well, you couldn't exceed your side yard, but would your side yard put, pull you too close to the street? Isn't that what we're saying?
Well, so, so let's just, so Carrie, if you point out which one is 6605.
That's this one here.
So that is currently fronting on Cahill Lane, and so it would be subject to the setback. It would not be driven by 6604 at the top, it would be driven by 5504 next to it, right?
Correct, yeah.
Now, if they, if they rebuild 6605, if you can point to that, they rebuild that to orient it to Limerick Lane, so that side street there, and they're gonna orient it and choose that to be their front yard now, are they then subject to 6604, if you can point at 660, no, no, the one on the top? So once they turn and face Limerick, are they then subject to the one on the top?
This is a side street setback. It looks as though this one was built with a greater setback this way, shorter this way, with the garage facing the street, so this was allowed to come to 20 feet. So, they would have, they would be-
So it doesn't matter which way they orient, they're gonna-
Right, they're still subject-
They're gonna deal with, they're gonna deal with the adjacent property owner who has a front yard.
Yes.
But if there's two front yards, so if that house on the top and the house on the side both face those streets, then they could choose?
They, they would have to, if, if they both face the street, the setbacks would have to match both sides. So they'd be required a front street on both, on both sides.
I don't think that's what our language says.
So the house, the, yeah, the house that's existing-
And you don't wanna have, and you don't wanna have a, a front yard lining up with a side yard, that's not the point of-
Or going beyond it.
Right.
Because-
The front yard is subject to a side yard.
In this example, the, the one in the middle there, that 5504, if you imagine that was pushed back a little bit further, and both of those houses were originally facing Cahill Lane, they tear down and rebuild 6605, or whatever that number is, I guess that was a, a Limerick Lane address, but anyway, could they then pull their side yard closer to Cahill Lane with the new building? Because that would be considered a side yard, not a front yard any longer.
I think you say the thing so that couldn't here.
So effectively, if 5504 were further back, it could have side yards, homes on each side of it, and it could be just kind of stuck back in a hole.
I'm gonna have to think about that one some more.
Have we never had double frontage lots? Have we always had it so the resident can choose?
Yeah, the previous ordinance where there's now three steps here, um, you had three choices of how your front yard setback was determined. So you had choices, it wasn't this.
Was it gonna-
One option fits.
But you almost, always needed a variance for any corner lot, right? Because otherwise it became unbuildable with the two front setbacks, right?
And we do get a lot of variants for corner lots.
And we do get a lot of those, and-
Because they end up driven by both, by both, by the houses abutting on both streets, and that's what you're trying to get rid of, right?
Well-
Are you?
I guess, I'm saying, is there- I guess I'm saying, is there any harm with those coming in? Because typically grant them to build something there.
Right.
And then it becomes a review of exactly what they did.
But you, but this ordinance is kind of saying, if, if the house that's abutting, if what would, what would be used to generate that front yard setback is their side yard, then it doesn't count. Right?
That's the intent here. Yeah.
No matter how, it's not what happens with the subject house, it's what the other two are, that the front yard will be driven by whether the abutting properties have front yards or side yards.
Right.
So if they had two side yards somehow.
So.
I'm still worried about the side yard sneaking out here on us.
Yeah, so on the example on the screen, the, maybe I should go back up. So if they chose this to be the front street, and let's say this is a side street setback, so they don't have an abutting home to dictate, then the code would go back to the thirty-five foot front setback requirement, which is our starting point. So they would be required a thirty-five foot setback here.
But Carrie, what happens on the south side of that house then?
Here?
Yeah. Isn't that a side yard?
No, because this property faces the street, they need a front street setback here.
Even if their house orients toward Limerick Lane?
Correct.
Oh, so it's not up to how the house orients, it's just, it'd be driven by the, the abutting properties. And if you have front yard, if you're, if the abutting properties have front yards, then you're subject to those.
Yep.
This has got to be good TV for people still watching. And for our audience.
I was just thinking, that's where our work sessions worked, worked well.
That's all right. So what do people think? Are you, well, let me, let me ask about the one that seems to be drawing less attention. Do we think with Commissioner Lee's suggested amendment, that the one foot above entry level language works? Or do we need more massaging on that?
Could you give me the exact wording then? That would be change, please?
I was proposing, let's see, the first floor elevation of the home being torn down is deemed to be the lowest elevation of an entrance to the dwelling, excluding entrance to, entrances to, and next to the garage. So that's, and entrances that do not face a street.
That would allow someone to set their first floor elevation higher. I'm not sure if that's a good thing or bad thing, but the intent of the.
Oh, I see. So you were saying that not having that language, you have a split level and you've got an entry that's right next to the garage, well, that's their, that's their entry.
You were trying to say that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you would put it down at the garage level. Well, here's the thing, a lot of those types of homes, that is not the natural contour of land when you look at it. You can literally see that they carved out to get that garage below. And so now if we're going to tell them to set that as the first floor, I don't know, they, they would have a whole first floor level that wouldn't be windowless on the back side.
Then they could come in for variance.
I, I kind of agree. I agree. This is really against my nature, but I agree that I think that might be a situation for a variance. Because if you just say it's an entrance next to the garage, next to could be next to and eight feet up. So, you know, if you keep the wording that simple and don't tie it to that level of the garage door entrance. So I'm, I'm kind of thinking, I like it the way it is here, just because there, there are very few exceptions to that. And those that are, would be unique enough where I think it would meet the standard for a variance. Because the contour of the land is something unique about the lot as well.
And it does default to the lower level. And then, which is what we're trying to kind of achieve, is people not artificially raising the level of the house. And I suppose somebody could come in and say, well, I have a unusual situation where that wasn't really the honest level and.
Yeah. Okay. That, that makes sense to me.
But I do think Commissioner Lee is right, that that first entrance needs to be plural. Entrances to the garage. Commissioner Carr?
And the word home, I believe, should be dwelling. That's how it's referred to before the first floor elevation of the dwelling being torn down.
Oh, good. Yeah, in the existing language.
And, and that reminds me of another, was pointed out to me this morning, that we have, you note in the ordinance, sometimes we say abutting lot, sometimes we say adjoining lot. The code is not real consistent, we're consistently inconsistent. And I'm guilty too, as I'm suggesting a different language here. So that's, that's another thing that we want to make that uniform throughout the code. So I just raised that as, as an issue.
All right, so.
Why does it have to be plural entrances to the garage?
Because of those situations where you have the, you know, kind of the service door that's right next to the garage?
Right. But, but why do you have to use that as the identity?
It just sounded like it read better. But maybe it's just, maybe it's just grammar.
Because then it could again be three feet higher than the entrance, the car entrance to the garage.
Doesn't that cover the door, the man door next to the garage? Otherwise, if you just say entrance to the garage, that could be the garage door that goes up, you know, for your car to go in.
Right. But some, you can also have a, a man door going in that is actually elevated with steps down into the garage that's, you know, where the, the door is. There's so many permutations of this thing. I don't know. If you like entrances, I'm cool.
Well, I think this one, the way we have it, is entrances to the garage. So if that door actually was a lowered level online with the garage, but it didn't go to the garage, they're going to have to come for a variance. That's what we're saying, right?
What if it's higher? What if it's three feet higher and there's interior steps that go down to the car level entrance? Then, but yet it's striking to the garage.
If it's not an entrance to the garage.
That would be, and you can have an entrance into the garage that's higher than the garage door.
But we're excluding entrances to the garage.
Then that would be it. That would be the lowest elevation.
But we're, we're excluding entrances to the garage. I mean, so the language is saying you don't count those.
Okay.
It's the lowest entrance, lowest elevation of an entrance to the dwelling.
That's cool. I'm fine.
All right, how about the, how about the setback stuff? Where, is that language ready? Or do we still need to think about that?
Maybe we could postpone it either to the next meeting or the meeting after that, because the, our thirteenth meeting, is that our next meeting? Or?
Yes.
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting that we take any, we have to have a public hearing on these. This is just kind of massaging it until then. And we can still make changes even at, at a public hearing.
And maybe again, come with some visuals, visuals to give us examples in each of these instances, how it would work.
All right, is that, Commissioner Forrest?
I, I really, I, I like this. I think it's a, it's a great improvement. I, I know that some city codes actually do have visuals in the code that demonstrate things like setbacks or exceptions like this, or even massing and stuff. So maybe that's something we want to consider in situations like this, where interpretation could be fuzzy on first read.
That's a good point. So are we, so we probably want to see it again before we set a time for a public hearing on it? Is that the sense I'm getting?
Certainly. I will not be at your next meeting. Was it something that we would want to have on that agenda? Or should we just put it on, wait for the twenty-seventh?
Yeah. You can't get off that easy. And that's going to, we're going to have plenty to do at that meeting.
Yes.
Okay. So you need anything more than that?
No.
Okay, good. All right, next up, conflicts of interest bylaws. We had some discussion about this language. And just to recap, this is language that is in our bylaws, as I understand it. But it is also part of kind of the standard that's in all of the bylaws of all the boards and commissions in the city. Right, Carrie?
Correct.
And so we had some discussion. We, we were missing some members and wanted to make sure that we had full membership. Commissioner Scherer was here at the last meeting and had a chance to weigh in on that. But Commissioner Schroeder, I know, was not here. So we had some discussion about how to, how to frame this language. And I know Commissioner Schroeder, you have some, you have a perspective on this issue. And so I wanted to make sure you had a chance to weigh in on it.
Well, I can, if you, if you'd like. First of all, I understand the need for this. I will tell you that when you get into the business that some of us are in, the community is small, and we end up working for many of the people who are in front of us, or have worked for them, and may at some point in the future work for them. Although I think, based on some of my comments to some developers, I may be limiting my future opportunities. But I, I think that the question becomes, at one, at one point, is there the notion of having a financial interest? Because in a sense, people in my business are always prospecting for the next project. Any of these developers who are coming for us could hire any one of us, well, some of us, and the design professions to represent them. And our ability to, the, the concern I have is to preclude my vote on something, because there might be something in the future or something in the past. It's, it's, it's hard because the, the community is small, and I don't know what actually constitutes financial interest. I also work for a firm that is very diverse in the kind of services that it offers. And I have plenty of people in my firm that I never engage in anything I'm ever doing. I don't know who they are, never met them. But if the firm has a financial interest in something that's going on, would that preclude me from acting on something that comes before this board?
Yeah, I think one of the discussions we had last time was how difficult, you know, this language about employed, well, you know, you could, you might not be employed, but you might be allied in some way, you know, it's, and I think the standard is really the financial interest. It's almost, I mean, I'm coming to the conclusion, it's almost better not to even mess with the employed. You know, what we end up dealing with is if you have a financial interest in something, and that, you know, like we were saying in the last piece we were talking about, it's very difficult to try to craft language that predicts every single situation we're going to ever encounter. The point is, I think there were two points we were trying to drive at. One is, by virtue of volunteering to be on this body, people who have expertise in the industry shouldn't be excluded from being able to pursue work. And if it happens that that work ends up in front of us, of course, they can't participate in the decision making about that. But we want to be clear that, you know, we're going to miss out on a lot of expertise if we say to anybody in the industry that they can't work on stuff in, in our community. And that's, that strikes me as not fair. Then the flip side of it is, how do you determine whether you're really kind of engaged? And I, I do think that, that in, that there are cases, you know, I mean, I can see cases on both sides, when, when a company or a firm comes in front of us, and there's somebody who is employed by or is a member of that company or firm. I, I'm not sure we can make a blanket rule about when they're, when they're going to have a conflict or not.
It would presume that in some, I'm just kind of, in, in some cases, kind of going to extremes, but there could be projects that come before us, that I wouldn't even know my company is doing. I would not have any association with it, of course, if I didn't know what was going on. But I could see that happening. It becomes, it's problematic.
Right. And then you have a different, you know, there's a different situation with a firm, a professional kind of association like that. And then you have a company where, you know, you're employed by the company and they're, you know, and that's, and I guess, I'm, I'm, the more I look at it, the more inclined I am to just deal with these things as they come up. Commissioner Carr?
Well, I'm agreeing with your comments, and I believe it's too restrictive right now, the way it's written. I didn't bring it with me, but I did find the League of Women Voters guidelines for conflicts of interest. And I believe they were general guidelines. You can't always have hard and fast rules in this area, because they're fact dependent on whether or not you have a conflict of interest. So I think we should take a look at those. Now, Carrie, you mentioned that this is the language that has been adopted by the other commissions and boards. Now, while that may be true, they don't, all of them don't have the same type of decision making that we have to make here, and we make quasi judicial decisions. So I, I would like to take a look at those. Maybe we could distribute those guidelines that have been published. I thought they were very well-written. We, they're quite detailed. We maybe don't have to adopt such detailed guidelines. I certainly would be interested in taking a stab at, at drafting something that I think would be better suited for a planning commission. Because I, I don't think this quite does it for us. And I think, I agree, I think the concept of financial interest isn't well enough defined here. And I think it is important that we have the correct guidelines, but not have hard and fast rules, because they're going to be dependent upon the facts, whether or not there is a conflict of interest.
Commissioner Forrest?
Well, when this first came, you know, came out to us, as I just, after the last meeting, I went online and looked at some of these too. And this is actually very, this could be considered actually very liberal compared to some others, which, which do require somebody leave the room and all of that. There's a difference between, say, League of Women Voters or nonprofit board members and conflicts, because that has to do directly usually with self-dealing. It doesn't have to do with, like you said, people coming before us and, and with requests for, for decisions that affect our community. I, I like this for the most part. The word "any," as a result of any planning commission action, I think I would, I would change that to a planning commission action, so it, it circles back to what's directly before us now, versus, oh hypothetically, this might come later on. The employed thing is, is it, is an issue if somebody's, I can see where that's an issue in certain circumstances. On the other hand, if somebody does have financial benefit from your company, say if you're a partnership in a, you have a partnership in a company and you benefit then by profits that come later, that's, that's where it gets a little bit fuzzy. I don't think, you know, kind of like Commissioner Carr was saying, a conflict of interest, I'm more concerned about that than financial interest. I think financial, the words "as a result of" point to a financial interest as a result of this particular action that's before us. But I think conflict isn't clearly defined. Sometimes there's fuzzy stuff that should be disclosed, but you didn't, shouldn't necessarily have to depart from the discussion if it's not a direct financial benefit to you. So disclosure and conflict, I think, should both be addressed. Disclosure, even when it isn't a financial benefit, but that there may be, I have an affiliation with this person professionally, we belong to the same professional organization, I just want you to know that before we go forward with the discussion. You're not, go ahead, say what you're going to say.
Well, I know it's a small community, but I, I don't think it's reasonable to say, I know this architect coming before us. Is that what you're saying?
No. No, I'm just saying that there may be situations, like in the past, where we've had somebody who deals with a particular type of realis, commercial real estate. And if a project goes forward, that may benefit him, not directly in his paycheck, but it may benefit his company down the road. That would be a good thing to disclose, but it may not be the type of financial interest that would require them to withdraw from the discussion.
It could be a relative. It could be a relative coming. And that, there may or may not be a potential conflict of interest. Oh, you might live in the same neighborhood. Those are types of things that I think are important to disclose. They may not disqualify you necessarily from making a decision, but I think it adds to the transparency of the process. So I think it is more than just financial.
Disclose if it's in the neighborhood?
No, I was saying, it's, an applicant could be coming before the planning commission, and you may live next door to that person, or you may, you know, live in the surrounding area and may have an impact on your neighborhood. I feel that might be important to disclose, just because you're engaged in a decision-making process.
Okay, I live two blocks from that cracker property tonight. Was I, am I supposed to disclose that?
Well, I think it's more in light of, you may choose to voluntarily decide, you don't want to be involved on this, because, you know, I want to be able to live with my neighbor, for, you know.
That was just one example, it could be a relative, there could be many examples of conflicts of interest.
Well, I know, I don't want to have every time coming in, though, and some, three of us have conflicts of interest, because you can, the world is so connected, you could, you know, very quickly you could get a, what, it's a slippery slope to get there, I think.
Well, the conflict of interest is, is something that would also influence your decision. Some other fact that's going to influence your decision so that you don't make an objective, independent decision. So I, you know, I don't think that the current wording that we've got here addresses these, the true nature of conflicts of interest. So I think it's, and I, I think it is very important that we do have a policy on that, but I don't think this is adequate.
I'm not, I'm not arguing against, we, obviously, you should have a policy, I'm just concerned on how quickly we become a conflict on these things.
So I think that there's a couple of things going on here. One is, there is a, there is really a legal definition, and it really has to do with financial interest. And, and that's when you're, you know, legally going to be prohibited. And as we've talked about, there are circumstances, you know, that's going to be a very case-by-case decision, that's one of the reasons we have a city attorney to consult with and determine whether you're going to have a conflict in a particular case, and by, you know, legally have to withdraw. Then there's this whole bigger set of, you know, the, the phrase that comes to mind is, is the one I think Commissioner Carr raised, you know, is there something that isn't a financial interest, but it makes you feel like you're not able to be objective? And I think we all have to decide for ourselves in those cases, where we don't think we could be objective, and, and we shouldn't participate. And related to that is this notion of when, you know, when do you feel like you can be objective, but you want to make sure that people observing it know that you have a relationship with so-and-so, or, you know, you, you know them or not? And, and I don't know that we can prescribe that, I think that's just one of those things that, that you gotta, you know, everybody's got to judge for themselves if they've got, you know, if they've got some circumstance that somebody else might think would make it difficult for them to be objective, but they've thought about it and they're comfortable that they can be objective. Commissioner Forrest.
And I don't think that the potential of doing business with that person in the future is a direct financial benefit at that point in time either, so that, you know, if, if you're working for a company or with a firm that may do business with that person in the future, and, you know, you're constantly building relationships, I don't think that necessarily, that's not a direct conflict of interest, or financial interest, at that point in time, unless there's a direct benefit, I don't think.
Commissioner Carr.
Just looking at my emails here, I noticed, what it was, I sent the City of Brainerd Conflict of Interest Policy to Carrie, and that was based on a template from the League of Women Voters. I thought it was very well-written. They did require that the, if, if there's a conflict, that the person should leave the dais, as they called it. They also had another interesting thing that wasn't reflected in our provision here, they said that although the person with the conflict must abstain from voting on the matter, he or she will still be counted for purposes of a quorum, which I thought was an interesting matter to note. And also, it was quite, another thing it raised by looking at this Conflict of Interest Policy, was, I asked the question, well, maybe this isn't appropriate for the planning commission, why conflict of interest issues are dealt with in the bylaws of each commission or board? And it would seem to me to make more sense to have the city adopt a policy that applies to all elected and appointed officials, rather than leave it up to each individual board or commission to modify their bylaws as they see fit. Because again, it seems like this is something of interest to the entire city, and shouldn't necessarily be changed by each commission as they see fit. But again, it's, it's a, it's a fairly extensive Conflict of Interest Policy, I don't think, I certainly can't read it here tonight, but I, I'm, my recommendation would be that we distribute that to everyone on the planning commission. And again, it doesn't have to be quite as detailed, but I think there is more guidance there.
So I think, first of all, I think this is a healthy conversation for us to have, you know, to periodically address this, and just so we're kind of thinking through the various scenarios. But I'm struck by your comment about, you know, kind of a city policy. I mean, and we kind of have it, that's, this bylaw is really, this particular bylaw provision, I think, is in every one of the bylaws for the different boards and commissions, and it was generated by the staff and with, I assume, the council's approval to incorporate. And it may well be, I'm starting to think, I'm feeling good about the conversation we've had, I think we're, we're understanding where we are, that maybe we leave it alone as it is, and, and, you know, the kinds of materials that you've gathered might be appropriate for Carrie to circulate within staff, and as you're thinking about the bigger picture issues as this come up, maybe, maybe this gets addressed as a broader issue, as the council wants to, you know, if the council wants to pursue further kind of language on conflicts of interest. I don't know, what, how do people react to that? I'm not sure we can quite fix it.
Personally, I'd be interested to see what Commissioner Carr could come up with, if she's willing to do it, but, you know, we've also, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've increased the number of commissions, right? There, I mean, in, in a broad sense, I don't know how, how long, how dated this is, but I agree, it needs to be probably the same for all commissions, but I'm starting to see other commissions that would fall in the same category, could potentially benefit by their knowledge of things that they do for, on behalf of it, so, you know.
I'd say the way that we're a little unique, and maybe the heritage preservation board might be the only other one.
Well, transportation.
But where we really, we're the only ones who do quasi-judicial. You know, where we're deciding on particular applications where you might have that, you know, you, you have to be neutral, and, and you can't be, you can't be, you know, subject to, you can't have a conflict with respect to the party that's there.
Well, what if Commissioner Carr drafted up something, and then this might be something that we, we pursue further, much like we did the Living Streets ordinance, you know, it's just something to put on the list, and we would eventually propose that, or, or share it with the planning, I, I'm sorry, the city council.
I think that's a good idea. Maybe you could circulate the, at least circulate the Brainerd stuff that I know you sent to me and to Carrie, but.
I'll send, or Carrie, would you want to send that to everyone?
I, I will, sure.
Okay.
Commissioner Schroeder.
This is kind of a minor point, but I'm, I'm wondering if in the state statutes, is the planning commission required to establish its own bylaws, or can the city council establish bylaws for us?
Oh, yeah, good question, I'm not sure.
I don't think, I certainly don't think, well, I don't know, maybe we should check on that.
I, I don't believe that a Conflict of Interest Policy has to be reflected in, in the bylaws. I think you can have a policy, instead of having it incorporated in the bylaws.
One thing you did ask me to, is just kind of an FYI, you asked me to check in with Roger about the, you've established that you do have a conflict, and you've recused yourself, and you go and sit in, in the audience. The question was, can you then participate as a resident? And he said, sure, you absolutely can, so, for what that's worth.
Well, there's two city attorneys that agree. Which doesn't mean they all do. Okay, anything else that we need to do on this issue? Sounds like we'll just kind of circulate some things, and then we can decide if we want to get it back on a future agenda. All right, thank you. I think it's, I just think it's really important conversation to have from time to time, so I'm glad that we've done it. All right, so next up is correspondence, no, yes, correspondence and petitions. Attendance sheet is in, didn't see a council update. But, you know, we've discontinued the newsletter deal, right, and so we're, we're down to, oh, is it in here? Never mind. There's a lot of things I just wasn't finding in my packet tonight that were right in front of me. So we have both of those. If you have any, any, any suggested modifications to the attendance sheet, bring those to Jackie directly. Next is chair and commission comments. I, there is an item in the packet that I asked Carrie to pass along. It was just a editorial article that I saw in the Star Tribune on density, written by Thomas Fisher, who's the chair of the, is it the Design School at the University of Minnesota? I think that Nancy Scherer also circulated something noting that Mr. Fisher was responding to another article that was taking the opposite perspective. And I didn't, I, I sent it around because we've had several discussions in the last few months about items, particularly in the Southdale area, where density has come up. And we talked about our comprehensive plan, and I remember we had that meeting where we, we had to kind of make the housekeeping changes for density in the Southdale area, and, and we were kind of going around trying to figure out what was the right density for right areas, and we suddenly realized that we were just kind of taking shots in the dark. I think we need to have some kind of structured conversation about density. I mean, the 7,200 France issue came in front of us, and, and that's, you know, obviously there's going to be folks who are going to feel strongly about that there, and, and I'm just feeling like we don't have, we're not having a very organized approach to how we're reacting to proposed density in that whole area, and I wanted to raise the issue and see what thoughts, if anybody has any thoughts about how to approach that.
When we talked about that, I could go, or we also just, I'm sorry. When we discussed that before, when the density came up, when we kind of did that short version, were we talking that we would just keep it the way it is, and then when we do the cop plan amendment, really look at that?
Yeah, and I think we did conclude that we would just try to reflect what exists, but I'm worried that we may need to have a conversation about that before 2018, because, boy, we keep getting more projects that are asking for more density.
And what I was just going to add to that, I, I completely agree. And also, the setbacks, I know that we keep saying we want to go closer to the street, and that's exactly what happened on York, you know? And I think we all agree with that, we want that active street, but we're not really giving them any direction, you know, beyond that, you know? Bring it forward, and then they bring it forward, and we're like, well, that's too close, or, you know, that doesn't do what we want. So I don't know where exactly we can bring that in, but it would be great to have more guidance to, you know, provide them, so, and for us, too, so we can say, look, that, you know, so we can more articulate what it is that we're really looking for. So I, the density and the setbacks, that's what I've noticed the most since being on the planning commission, is that we're always kind of just changing it, and each case is its own.
Feels very ad hoc.
It's very ad hoc, and I just think when you take a big picture, once it's all developed, it's going to look a little messy, so.
Other thoughts, Carrie?
Yeah, I can mention, engineering department has put in its CIP for 2015 to do a transportation study of the Southdale area to address this very issue, and sewer and water is, is also part of that, so I think that would be the time to piggyback on that and take a look at land use.
I, I also think this is, this is an area where we need to engage the public, you know, because it's, the question is, what's the kind of, especially that Southdale area, and for those, particularly the residents who are near there, but also all of the residents in the community who use that area, and how do we want more density? If we do, why? And if we do, and we know why, how much more density? And how do we know how much is too much? And, you know, we kind of had a conversation about this with respect to height at the last comprehensive plan update, although it was really just a ceiling without much conversation. But we never really had the density conversation, so I'd like to try and figure out some way to, to engage on that. I don't know if it's part of this, you know, visioning process that the council is going through, that we've, you know, we've been trying to do a pre-comprehensive plan process, and we haven't, we haven't started that because we've kind of been waiting to dovetail it with that visioning process, and maybe this is different, I don't know. Commissioner Lee.
You know, the, speaking of visioning, is, is that what we're talking about, the 2020?
Well, now, what is it going to be, 2040?
Okay, so what's the timeframe on that? I, I actually dug up the original 2020, which was done in 1990, is that right? And then there was an update in 2003? So has it not been looked at since? And that's more than 10 years now, right?
Correct, yeah, consultant was recently hired, and the process is going to begin here this fall.
And this will be, what are we calling that, 2040 now?
I believe that's correct.
So what do the numbers mean?
I guess it doesn't have an official name yet.
Okay, because I was thinking, is 2020 like vision, you know, 2020 vision, or did it have some significance for the year 2020, or 2000?
I think it was, I think the 2020 was a play on words, but it was designed to be kind of what would things be in 2020.
Right, I think that's the document that I've been finding there, just is, I wish there was more guidance on it, and I don't know what the timeframe is, but it's almost like we need something now. And so I.
Because it's happening now, we're getting the applications now, and.
Yes, and, and I agree with, with, with the chair here, that it really comes down to, we're supposedly a mature suburb now, we're, you know, we are where we plan to be. So do we really need that? Do we really want that?
Right.
Do we have to say yes? Should we say yes? You know, I want some compelling reasons to say yes, if someone said, well, it's in the city plan that we need to increase the tax base. Or we've always said that we want to bring more residents into the city of Edina, so that by, you know, such and such a year, we want to increase by 10%, but we want it in this segment, this type of population, or, I don't know. Again, and then it means, what does that mean for our school district? Does our school district want to grow, expand, be able to have more resources? Those are the kind of things that I think would really impact on, on us as a commission, on how we approach these things. So I don't know how we get that information, though, sooner, and put it to use. So I think I agree, that, that it would be nice to have some kind of conversation that involves the public, if, if it could be expedited in some way.
Well, it sounds like there's, we kind of have agreement that we ought to be trying to get out ahead of this in a proactive way. Maybe I can visit, follow up with Carrie, and we could, you know, Karen Kurt has been kind of leading this Vision 2040 effort, and Commissioner Schroeder had kind of put together a, a tentative kind of pre-comprehensive plan process that, that we, Carrie and Michael and I sat down with Karen and talked a little bit about how it would dovetail with that, but we haven't followed up on that really, and I think we need to. And maybe this is part of that conversation, we figure out some recommendations that we could come back to the planning commission to talk about how we might do that. Or maybe it's, maybe it's a separate deal that we recommend to the council, that this density, you know, the density in the, in the kind of commercial setback businesses is really, we're just feeling like we're getting those applications left and right, we don't have adequate tools to deal with them, and we want to, you know, we want to conduct some kind of an engagement process to develop that. Commissioner Carr, then, Commissioner Forrest.
Yes, I agree with all these comments, we talked about it last time, and again, I feel like we're making decisions, reactive decisions, we're not planning. And this city, great cities were built with plans in mind.
Yeah.
And while we have some high-level plans, again, for, take the Southdale area, I don't believe there is necessarily is a detailed enough vision for us to make these decisions when the developments come into us, and ask for certain heights or certain densities. I don't know that, we, well, I guess we do have some guidelines, but it's changing rapidly, the situation's changing. And I'm not sure, I think we need to revisit what our vision is for these various areas in the city.
Commissioner Forrest.
I think some things, you know, are going to be more hard and fast, some things are going to be vision. I'm not so much concerned with the setback issue, because primarily the things that have. have been coming before us, where this has been an issue, have been PUD applications, which are to be taken more individually. But the density and the height things, I think, are, are more critical. It's good for them to have guidance regarding setbacks, but that is more, I think, guidelines when it comes to the PUDs at this point in time. It certainly doesn't have quite the impact positively or negatively as density and heights can.
I was going to make a comment. I think this is a great problem to have, because we have a thriving community that people want to be in.
Yeah.
I mean, at the end of the day, other cities would absolutely kill for this much investment in their community. So, I just want people to keep that in mind here as we go through this. Yes, I agree on the visioning, but we have a very, we have a great community that people want to be in too. And it's nice to see the economy improving, that all these projects are coming in. It makes, makes for everyone's day.
Well, and, and part of the reason that, that Mr. Fisher's article caught my, my attention is that, you know, a lot of times you hear people talking about density, but they're talking about it being a bad thing. And he was just making the point that there's a lot of benefits to it, and there's a lot of things you can leverage from that. So, I just think that's, we have to talk about what the pros and cons are.
I agree. I just put it in perspective.
Yeah, I think it's a great point, that it's a nice problem to have. All right, well, I'll follow up with Carrie and Karen and see how we might proceed on that. One other item for chair comments, and Jackie, maybe you tell me whether I've got this right or not, but, you know, we had a whole ton of paper for the item that we're continuing to the next meeting. Can we just hang on to that agenda item without, I mean, it's not going to change, Carrie, do you?
That would make things easy for us.
That would be nice, because that seems like a lot of trees to waste if we just throw them away. There might be new materials.
There may be new materials.
Or...
There may be more letters.
Yeah, correspondence.
If you, right, if you got more stuff, you know, you can put it in the packet, but let's keep the core packet without replicating that over again, so if you can sort that out of your materials, yeah. Any comments from the commission? Commissioner Lear, Commissioner Forrest.
Commissioner Lear, you can add in here. We did meet with our planning team for the Wooddale Valley View Small Area Plan Project last Wednesday evening. It's a great bunch of enthusiastic people, and it's, I think we really are pleased with the diversity of the group and what they have to bring to the table. We will be next week, I believe, interviewing the three finalists for consultant for the project as a team, so we're looking forward to that as well.
And when will the, so then, once you get the, the consultant onboard, you're going to then build the process from there?
Yeah, it is, we were just talking about that, so it's going to happen pretty quickly. I, I guess we haven't decided conclusively, but our goal was to, there's a timeframe, we have to really allow for public notification. And I think we, we need something like 30 days to get that first, what are we calling that first session? You know, with...
Well, one of the first community sessions.
Community, yeah, yeah, input session.
It's more, it's not so much a public notice as it is, it's the marketing of that event, so there's time, there's a time to publish it.
So, we need 30-day notice for that, and I think that we're saying that we want to get that going by September, so, no later than September. So, it's literally, once that consultant comes onboard, I think, within a couple weeks, we're going to try to get that meeting going, I mean, or announced, I should say, announced, announced...
Well, certainly, hopefully, in these sessions, to the extent anybody stays with us till this time, we should be making sure to remind people when dates are coming up for meetings. You guys have been great about that, so...
Yeah.
I'm really excited to see how this unfolds. I think it's a great process, and you've done a great job of leading it, so keep up the good work.
Thanks.
Commissioner Platter.
Carrie, I just had a question on the council update. The, it said the council denied the duplex at 4923 49th Street. Can you give a little flavor for that of what, what happened?
They did. It was a four-to-one vote for denial. I think they thought it was too big for the site, concerned with drainage.
That's the one that went to one driveway and backs up to the potential parking ramp site that we voted four-to-four on?
Correct.
Okay.
And they wanted, what, 28% lock coverage or something?
It was 28% with the building, and then when you added in the patio, it was 32.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and it's good to follow those up. All right, any other comments from the commission?
At the last city council meeting, Rising Senior Taylor Halva was reappointed to the Planning Commission, and then Rising Junior Madison Sealy was appointed to take her place. So, I, I have not met Madison, but I'm sure that Taylor and I can reach out to her, and she'll probably, I think that they're supposed to start in the fall. And of course, I'll be leaving next month, so...
But you'll be able to join us? You said that you, you're, you're feeling compelled to stay around for the next meeting?
Yes, considering the continuation of the project, and I'm so vested in, I'll just, maybe I'll pop in if that would be...
Well, traditionally, I think the students that are leaving bring treats, don't they?
Well, maybe that can be a...
Well, we certainly want to mark the occasion, so we'll, we'll plan on having you at the next meeting, and, and then maybe in between, we can see if there's, but it'll be great to have a new member, and to the extent you can participate in helping her get incorporated, it'd be great. All right, yeah, so don't sneak away under dark of night. We, we still need to, you know, haze you on the way out to do it. Carrie, Jackie, Jordan, any comments, staff comments?
Just quickly, the other council item that they considered was the sketch plan at 7200 France. And they had a lot, a lot of the same concerns the Planning Commission did. It's too tall, too dense, a lot of traffic concerns. From the time the Planning Commission reviewed the sketch plan to the time the council did, I believe we received about 300 emails in opposition of the, of the project. So, the word got out, a lot of traffic concerns as well, so. The other item is the tree ordinance that's still lingering out there. We've been promised a work session for August 20, August, October 21st. Apologize, we've, there's other pressing issues, budget, CIP, that the council wanted to get to, but we're locked in now at October 21st.
And then the work session we were going to do with staff on building permits, engineers, et cetera, when are we doing that?
Oh, yes, thank you for that. We are doing that on August 27th.
And is that the same day as a regular meeting?
That is.
And we just thought we'd do it at 5:30, is that...
Yeah, or maybe even five, or five, I guess we can, maybe we could get through it in an hour and a half, 5:30.
Well, you let us, maybe if you talk to them and you figure out what you need, then...
Yeah, we're going to have a meeting, staff is, with all the staff that are going to participate in this, that's the building official, city engineer, Ross, you know, anybody who's involved in the building permit process, as well as the two watershed districts. So, we're going to meet next week to kind of organize, and maybe we'll have a better grasp for how long it will take, so maybe we do want a 5 o'clock start.
Well, why don't you just, if you can just directly communicate to make sure everybody gets that on their calendar. Commissioner Platter.
I was going to say, well, we have a chance to get questions in advance or comments to be addressed with that, is that...
If you'd like to.
I think it's a great idea. You know, like when we met with the city attorney, I encourage people to, I just think we'll get more value out of it if they know what we're concerned about.
Yeah, and, so should things go to Carrie or to you first, or to Cosby?
Let's send them to Carrie, and, and then maybe Carrie periodically, as you're getting them, you can circulate them around so everybody knows what other people are asking.
Okay, thanks.
Because I think that's a great, we, we want to give them, I'm sure they want to figure out what it is we're interested in, and the more we can focus on that...
Yeah, and I'm hoping some of the things that we're thinking are being, starting to be talked about there, and, you know, what's the next steps on particular, and, you know, we've seen some of it on engineering, which is great, but, you know, how does the follow-through is on those pieces also?
All right, very good. Anything further? Okay. Thanks, everybody. I know this was a long evening. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Someone?
Is there a second? It fails, for lack of a second. Sorry, we stay here. Well, all in favor, say aye. Aye, we are adjourned.